Welcome to the council meeting for the 7th of May. Please join me in standing for the opening. Karakia. Akataka, Ihu, Iru. Akataka, Tika, Titoga. Ki'amena, Iramuta. Kiemata, Te'astai. Ihai, Ahuru. Ihu, Ihuka, Ihahu. Ihai, Mariora. Thank you very much. Now, before we start, I would just like to do a couple of acknowledgements. And the first one is for Stuart Miller's passing. I'd like to acknowledge the recent passing of Stuart Miller, aged 91. That's pretty good endings. Stuart was elected to First Banks Peninsula District Council and served as Chair on the Akeroa-Warirua Community Board and was Deputy Mayor in Banks Peninsula for a number of years. I understand the Banks Peninsula Community Board will be acknowledging Stuart's life and accomplishments when they give their report a bit later this morning. But I just wanted to take a moment to recognise him and acknowledge his passing before we begin today. Stuart was an unwavering in his commitment and his service to the community and he will be missed. So I'm looking forward to see what the Community Board has to say. Right, secondly, I'd like now to shift gears and to recognise a few recent and really important successes. First off, a huge congratulations to Takuru, he's probably not listening. Our Stormwater Facility won top awards last week's Public Works Engineering Excellence Awards. It was named the best public works project over 5 million and also received the award for excellence in the environment and sustainability. So well done to everyone that was involved in that. This has really highlighted the city's commitment to building resilient and environmentally conscious infrastructure and it was incredibly timely given what happened last week. During last week's rain, our retention basins, including the ones at Takuru, were really, really put to the test and they did exactly what they were meant to do. Despite getting more than 140mm of rain, we managed to avoid some of the worst impacts of flooding, which before these upgrades to our systems were in place, we had actually seen quite a bit. For instance, there was a notable difference in the scale of flooding in areas like Beckenham and Wollston and with historically, the areas where we have historically seen flooded homes before. We do however have some issues in Banks Peninsula and we will need to address those going forward, along with the likes of Lake Forsyth and other areas. I also want to take a moment to recognise the response to the flooding from our staff and our volunteers, all staff across the board, contractors, volunteers and community boards. Everyone pulled together and it was very, very good to see. And many others in the community, they've been working tirelessly, some of them around the clock. They worked hard to ensure our response was timely, appropriate and kept the safety and communication with our residents at the forefront of every decision that was made. I'm so proud of the professionalism, effort and expertise everyone, you and everyone displayed last week and continue to demonstrate as we move forward. So thank you very much. Okay, I'll move on to, we're withdrawing. I've been advised by the Chief Executive in accordance with Standing Order 6.8 that the request of councillor Donovan, I am advising that item 22, the notice of motion request for advice regarding freedom campaigning is withdrawn from today's agenda. Number one, I have an apology from councillor Moore and councillor Donovan for lateness. Can I have, I'll move it and.
Taranis.
Taran?
Taranis, Taranis. Stuck in the tunnel.
Oh, really? Say his lateness, possibly, yep. And councillor Fields, anyone else? Okie doke, so I'll move it and Mark will second it, all those in favour? Alright, okay, thank you, that's carried. We have no declarations of interest today. And now we'll hear from the Community Boards. First up is Banks Peninsula and Lyn and Penelope are here, so welcome to the table.
Did I hear the tunnels closed? Is that what? Oh dear.
To begin with, I want to take a moment to expand on Phil's comment about Stuart Miller, who passed away recently at the age of 91. Stuart was the kind of person every community hopes to have. Steady, principled and deeply committed to the people and the place he called home. He took on many roles and wore many hats, including farming in McQueen's Valley. He truly understood the values, challenges and strengths of rural life. As deputy mayor of the former Banks Peninsula District Council and later the chair of the Akeroa-Warirua Community Board, Stuart brought wisdom and calm leadership. He had an in-depth understanding of environmental and planning issues and was known for his fear-logical approach. Whether it was through district plan reviews, working groups or resource consent hearings, Stuart always championed practical solutions and genuine community input. He had a gift for bridging the rural-urban divide, helping city decision-makers better understand the perspectives and needs of our peninsula communities. His passing is a huge loss and his legacy will remain woven into the fabric of his community for years to come. So let's begin with the BP meets site. We recently received a staff report after public consultation outlawing possible future uses, a mix of residential and commercial. But we've heard loud and clear from the community that community use must also be on the table. Three groups made a deputation and we received additional written feedback reinforcing these points. The board took that feedback seriously and has requested that the consultation scope be widened to include a community workshop. This will take place in early June and will allow for a broader discussion for residential, commercial and community use options. The community has already done a lot of thinking about the space and it's important their vision helps to guide the process moving forward. Extreme weather event and like Phil said, I agree. Extreme weather event and like Phil said, I agree thanks to everybody who's helped out and the planning that has already been done to mitigate a lot of mitigation for flooding and taking care of the roads, it's been a lot of work done, thank you very much. Eastern Banks Peninsula was essentially cut off, so that's like from Gebrevis Pass all the way east. So basically the whole of Banks Peninsula except for Littleton. State Highway 75 was closed for 55 hours, so that's more than two days. People missed operations at the hospital, they missed work, missed school and some lost out on pay because of that. Wainoa lost all power and communications and slips and fallen trees caused damage across the region. In Akaroa, a burst water pipe led to human waste overflowing some of the shops and buildings, not great. A temporary pump is in place but full replacement will take time and affect access along Beach Road. In Lighthouse, road is unstable, it's literally cracking. And residents nearby, including the health centre, remain on standby for potential evacuation. So there's so much uncertainty right now around there. Fleabay is isolated and there's growing concern for the future of local businesses like Pohati Penguins over there unless alternative access is found soon. Little River also bore the brunt with flooding damaging the petrol station, homes and the pub. The volunteer fire brigade did an outstanding job rescuing people from a car, pumping water away from homes and supporting residents. Rural roads are in a rough shape but I can see that they're already being worked on, which is fantastic. And while we're grateful that stock losses were limited, there's still significant clean-up ahead. Hearing from people on the ground during and after this event, it's clear how helpless many people feel. The stress and the worry takes its toll. We know that Mother Nature is powerful and so much great work on flooding mitigation has already been done. This helps but we need to look at what we can improve on and soon because winter is coming. Lake Forsyth is obviously a factor in this. It is critical that we have clear processes that allow for nuance around the lakes opening, especially before expected heavy rain like orange warning rainstorms and clear understanding of that process as a community as well. This weather event also showed the incredible spirit and effort of our local volunteers and emergency teams. Now it's our responsibility to match that with smart planning, support for a strong infrastructure and reliable agile systems moving forward. So our communities are not just reacting to these events but are ready for them. Thank you very much.
Okay, great, Tyrone, please.
Thank you, your worship, I'm Kilda Lynne. And yeah, pretty harrowing weekend in Banks Peninsula. Just want to just focus on Little River very quickly, just the Kinlock Bridge. Is there anything we can do as a council, because I know that's a council piece of road just off the state highway there, is there anything we could do with that bridge to mitigate flood risk and do it quickly?
Probably a fair bit and I think we're already working on working with the flooding group. So the council said they want to work with the flooding group on that in some degree. That is an area that the flooding group, so there's stakeholders from all areas around Wairiwa, there's Arunanga, there's Iqan, there's the local community and city council support on that as well. So that's been going for a long time and we've identified that area as one that we want to investigate more and we're hopefully getting information back in regards to, we've done a study, so we've got data.
Raising it would be helpful, potentially?
Raising it?
Yeah.
We need to understand it better.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I've talked to Vanessa Winnick about it as well and she's willing to see what she can do from there.
Okay.
Anyway, thank you.
Great, thanks.
So just so that people are in the same wavelength, the Kinlock Bridge is, as you approach, correct me if I'm wrong here, as you approach Little River from outside, you can turn right and go down that road?
Yep.
And that bridge, or it might even be two of them, is it?
One bridge.
If that gets compromised or it can't get through there, that's what affects the whole of the township?
Yes, you can see water backing back. We just need to understand, you know, when it raises up to a certain point, hits the bridge, you can see water backing back, we just need to understand that a bit better. So there's a lot of concern from the community around what is causing the flooding, is that the pinch point?
Yeah, is that the bottleneck that's causing the grief? So it's good to hear that we're doing some work towards that.
One of them, yeah. It's also the only way in and out of the Okuti Valley as well, your worship.
And those southern bays, yeah.
Yep, Yanni, and then we'll move on.
Thank you, just two questions for me. One is, do you know how many properties suffered from above-floor flooding?
Don't know.
Maybe five. Maximum five.
Yeah, and do you know if they've had above-floor flooding in the past?
Yes.
Is the board looking at our flooding intervention policy?
Well, we're working with the flooding group to deal with the flooding.
We're waiting for the information to come back on this particular bit and that will bring all that into.
Are you hoping that we're going to cover that in particular?
Well, I think at some point.
The flooding intervention policy only kicks in if we can't mitigate, so look at mitigation.
And then the final question was just, thank you for bringing, you know, obviously paying respect to Stuart Miller with your presentation today. I'm mindful that Stuart was also the Chair of the hearing panel, that championed Takapunoki becoming a national reserve, historic reserve and then obviously wanting to become a national reserve. I was just wondering, is there anything, and maybe your board could reflect on it, but is there anything we could do as a city to recognise his service to the community? And if there was any ideas or anything that the board thought we could consider, I'd certainly welcome the opportunity to.
Yeah, we'll reflect on it.
Thank you.
Bring that forward, thank you, thanks for bringing that up.
Thank you, Lynne, and good to see you too, Pau. Take care. Rado, Callum, please. Sprayden Cashmere Heathkit.
Thanks, your worship, apologies for care today, unable to make it. Thanks for welcoming us back. So I've got a few things to cover off today. Firstly, Waltham mural event, so we'll start off with some, with a nice happy community story. On the 13th of April, we had an event to prepare the wall of the Waltham Pool for a mural. So it was looking pretty bare before that. And as you can see, they've done a great job to bring that to life. And it wasn't just the painting, it was a whole community event wrapped around that as well with the YCD Trust Youth and Cultural Development and local, they had a barber, braider, DJ and a sausage sizzle. And yeah, the mural there was done by Kofi Swahobosh. This is a pretty exciting development for our board. The board's approved a ground lease to the Addington Farm Trust, to a section of the park of Addington Farms. So this is the park that's on the corner of Barrington Street and Brom Street is what you'll probably think of, that park on the corner there. So just in the bottom right there is the section that we've granted to this community group for this lease. It's had extensive community support through consultation, lots and lots of excitement and positive feedback and we're really hopeful that it's going to activate a bit of a, well, it's currently a bit of an underutilised and dark and dingy corner of the park with a bit of antisocial behaviour. So yeah, we're really hoping this will turn that around and the community is excited about that too. Because one thing to say about this from our point of view is that we're aware that currently on the budget there is a line for the refurbishment of the toilet block there. And there's a budget essentially, as far as we're aware, to replace the, you know, what's existing. The Addington Farm Trust is really hoping that we can sort of take the opportunity of this change to activate that toilet block as well into something that serves both the farm and the wider community much better than the current toilet block. So we'd like to see more than just replacing what's there, we'd like to see a bit of creativity, maybe some redesign of the structure. And we're not sure exactly how, you know, what the design would look like yet exactly or the budget required, but we'd really love to see staff working with the community group to sort of figure out what's possible and if more budget is required to work with our board, I suppose, and council to figure out where that money could come from. Yeah, it's got a lot of potential, that site. Our neighbourhood building project that's been happening in Addington and Waltham's been a huge success. So this was originally funded through the board's Better Off funding. It's about strengthening local connections and building a participation culture in Addington and Waltham. So we had a temporary paid professional there to develop, well, to build leadership and voluntary leadership of the community. And so that when that person's, you know, by the time that person's contract comes to an end, the community will have an elevated group of leaders who are able to, you know, support different ideas in the community with resourcing and marketing and all that sort of thing. So yeah, it really is about leadership development at the end of the day and network building. And actually, the Addington project was so successful that the Department of Internal Affairs took interest and they've actually invested quite a large amount of money, millions of dollars, to deliver similar projects in three suburbs around New Zealand, one of which is in the Hoonhei area. So we're seeing this model replicated. So I think it's a huge credit to the staff involved. It was, it's quite an innovative approach to community development and yeah, we're excited to see it expanding. Yeah, I guess on the other topic of community development, you might have seen in the media a bit about the Yarns men. So they'll be setting up shop in our board area, providing a safe space for men to have open and honest conversations. And yeah, they're aspiring to a zero-suicide communities in New Zealand, which is pretty cool. And also, yeah, I want to echo everything that's been said so far around the successes that the staff have had around managing flooding, both in terms of preparation with those retention ponds. You know, as was mentioned, we've had better flooding outcomes with more rain, which is a huge credit to the engineering that's been done there. But also want to thank the staff that were working on the day to communicate with the community. I know our board staff was really, really busy, we're really, really busy talking with all of the neighbourhood groups and yeah, our overall response to the community is really positive. If you'll permit me an extra 10 seconds, I also do want to acknowledge the passing of Jens Christensen. We extend our deepest sympathies to his family. Jens Christensen's a former member of the Selwyn District Council and was working, in the progress of working with the board to find a home for the historic Ben's car that we were looking to house somewhere in Sumner. So yeah, you might have remembered that from a previous board presentation, but yeah, just wanted to acknowledge his passing while we're here. That's all from me.
Okay, absolutely, yes, Timothy?
Two things, just with regards to the Addington Farm. Some years ago, we moved Addington House to Cornelius Reserve, which is on Disraeli Street. Cornelius Reserve was not used, it had a playground and everything, but it wasn't really used. Moving the Addington cottage to that site has totally revitalised that whole area for the local community to the point where we've now got a three-on-three half basketball, which has totally changed that whole area. So the Addington Farm going to Addington Park, which is a fantastic park by the way, if you want to see good league games, go there. It should be a revitalisation for that whole area, which we're really excited about. So yeah, so the board's really supporting this, so thank you.
Cool, thank you very much, thank you very much, good to see you again. Okay, so we've got Jason and Bridgette and a new associate board member, Cooper. In the pram. Welcome.
Good morning, everybody. At our April meeting, the board adopted the management plan for the Maclean's Island Graslin Park. This park is 156 hectare scenic reserve located just west of the airport between Maclean's Island Road and Old West Coast Road. The reserve is nationally significant for its indigenous biodiversity and is home to several threatened plant species. Maclean's Graslin Park plays a crucial role in providing vital habitats for various vertebrates, including several threatened, at-risk and locally rare species. Among its notable inhabitants is the locally endemic Boulder Copper Butterfly, which is found exclusively in the Maclean's Island area. The reserve also provides habitats for multiple native bird and lizard species. The Christchurch 360 Trail runs through the reserve, offering visitors the chance to explore its unique natural history and the conservation of highly threatened species. We'd like to thank the staff for all of the hard work they've put into developing this plan.
Cool, next up, we are sure many of you are aware of the work of this great organisation. Their key goals are to facilitate collaboration and innovation between groups, provide support to environmental and sustainability groups and their projects, advance education and inspire action in environmental protection and sustainable living. It was interesting to hear about the mahi they do, including the Envaro Kids Programme with young people and the Stormwater Superhero Trailer. This trailer is a mobile resource that provides education around stormwater and actions to prevent contamination. The organisation is keen to attend local events with the trailer to educate and encourage participation. And then after a year-long break, the Walking Festival returned with over 30 organisations partnering with the Christchurch City Council to deliver more than 40 engaging walks. Despite some wet autumn days during the school holidays, the festival was filled with energy, exploration and connection. Highlights for Tamariki including going on a bear hunt delivered by the Shirley Community Trust at Walter Park with support from local volunteers and libraries and Gruffalo explorers at Bottle Lake Forest. This event brought together over 30 volunteers from the Play Centre, Community Watch, Berwood Christian Centre and was hosted by Plunkett. It was further supported by the Parks Team and community governance staff with both walks providing an exciting and engaging experience for young participants. The festival also offered self-guided, environmental, historical and expert-led walks with highlights including the Anzac Walk, Scape Public Art Trail and Gap Filler Stories of Play, all drawing strong community interest.
So the other week, I had the privilege of attending the Belfast Anzac Service. It was a great turnout for some of the smaller regional services and really good to see the support and of all of the local community showing out to that. And just like to thank the BCN Rotary Club and Belfast Bowling Club for putting on the event. It's really good to see just year on year, the number of people who are still coming out to these smaller events is fantastic. And that's us.
Thank you.
Excellent, any questions, anybody? You've done a fantastic job, well done mum.
Thanks, I appreciate that. It's been a whirlwind into motherhood but really supportive, so thank you so much.
Excellent, good to see you, good to see you so well. Okay, we have Emma and Simon, yeah, thank you, from Pepnew Innus Central.
Good to talk to you, thank you for the opportunity to present today. As usual, we're just going to give you a quick rundown on what's been happening in our board area over the past month. A large part of our April meeting was spent hearing deputations on and then considering the installation of 25 bus shelters across the central and eastern parts of our board area. We approved 18 of the shelters and you have another six which fall into the Central City Plan A area before you today as a part A and we're recommending that you approve those. At the meeting, we also approved an increase to the time-restricted parking on Westminster Street outside the shops at the Cranford Street intersection as well as the introduction of some P120 parking restrictions along a stretch of Bishop Street near Bilyev.
In April, the board received an update from staff on the Northern Corridor Downstream Effects Management Plan. Plans are proceeding for road pavement renewal for Flopton Street, which is pictured here, which has been a long time coming and the road there needs some significant work. Sewer renewal in that area was due in following years and that's been brought forward and will start soon and getting those works aligned is a cost-saving for council and overall will be less disruption for the residents there as well. We also heard from staff and discussed ourselves around the two intersections on Cranford Street at Westminster and, or not an intersection, but the signalised crossing at English Park. There's concerns from the community about pedestrian safety at both those crossings and what the board has a hopeful expectation of is at some point getting red light cameras there to help with enforcement and help with safety. We're hearing from NZTA that the earliest that might be considered is next year. Be great to see something sooner.
The Last Summer With Your Neighbours event's wrapped up over the last month and you'll see some photos there of the Moa Neighbourhood Group, Cherrywood Place, Redwood Springs and Staple Wood and Street event.
Acknowledgement to the Bishopdale Men's Shed for their work to install replacement seating in the grounds at St Paul's Church in Papanui. The seating there was originally installed more than 20 years ago to mark then the 150th anniversary of the building of the original church on that site, there's a lot of history there.
The annual Shirley Shine event was held in McFarlane Park in March with a good crowd of residents enjoying.
with a good crowd of residents enjoying low or no-cost activities for the whole family, as long, as well as stalls and um entertainment from locals.
Richmond Community Gala is always a highlight. Uh, there was a large public turnout this year. The weather was beautiful. Uh, there were stalls both at Avebury House and also through in Richmond Community Garden, uh, along with live music, community organisations and more. Uh, and a thank you from us to the many volunteers and staff from community agencies who contributed to that day.
The fantastic work and collaboration between park rangers and local residents continues in parks and reserves across our board area. This month, we're highlighting the efforts of all those involved in the Lancaster Park Planting Day, the ongoing work at Pack Street Park and Community Garden, Papanui Bush and Olivia's Reserve.
As you'll be aware, the community in the Emmet Street and Raisler Street area in Shirley uh recently lost a number of mature trees. One small silver lining from that is that all of the wood from those trees is being used in the local community, including, as pictured here, the establishment of a nature play area, uh, as well as the chipped wood and mulch uh also being used to support planting and to support softfall in that area.
Um, and finally, we've got a short video to share from the Stanmore Block Party, which was held in April. This was a collaboration between YCD, the Stanmore Corner Project, Euphoria Dance Studio and Council to activate the Stanmore Worcester Corner site and it was a huge success. Um, I understand we're having issues with sound, but we thought we'd still show the video anyway. And just so, one final thing, just for Yanni, you would have seen that the consultation opened yesterday on the Ferry Road pedestrian crossings. That's it from us.
There you go, yes.
Uh, thank, thank you. And like, yeah, I'm really pleased to see the plan going out for consultation. Um, I'm just, we've, I've asked for some information about the twenty twenty-two plan, why the, the new plan is so different? And, because there was a draft plan for consultation twenty twenty-two, which is not the plan that's gone out.
Right.
Are you able just to tell us the, why the change to the plan and also what the budget implications are? I'm just mindful of other projects that we're doing that we don't have sufficient budget for. So I want to understand if we know what the difference in budget is between the two and how much is currently on budget.
Um, we don't know that information, so that's something we'd have to find out from staff as well.
I mean, I'm just concerned that we're going to run out of time for the draft annual plan. Do we have an idea? We should have costings with these plans when they go out, so we know that they're funded. So I've put the question through OCA. It would be good to get an, an answer.
Yeah.
Cool. But anyway, thank you for um bringing it to the attention. I'm, yeah, grateful that it's, it's out there for engagement.
Good work. Good to see you again. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, okay. Uh, Marie Bai, no, not Bai, sorry. Holswell Hornby Ricketton.
Maganagumaga po sa inyung lahat. Good morning. Um, I have Bailey with me. Um, apologies from Helen.
Hello.
Right. Um, thank you for this opportunity to present the report of the Waipuna Holswell Hornby Ricketton Board. Um, I will just take the, the written board report as read, but I just have a few slides to highlight some of the community activities happening or have happened around our board area. Connect twenty twenty-five was held at Harrington Park Ricketton. The purpose of this event was to welcome new residents to the area and introduce them to local activities and community groups. The event was made possible through the dedication of volunteers and the support of local businesses and community partnerships organised by Oak Development Trust. It was a successful event with a good turnout. There were lots of engaging activities, including pedal mania with their unique and quirky bikes, sack raising, stone painting and an exciting tug-of-war finale where the children claimed victory over the adults. Walking Festival twenty twenty-five is a citywide event. Um, as mentioned by Bridget in the Waimeiro Board, um, it has returned after a year-long break. There were more than forty engaging walks and I believe it probably included parts of our board area, particularly the Holswell Quarry walking tracks. Now, Summer With Your Neighbours is about bringing people closer together and celebrating the unique and diverse mix of each neighbourhood. The last of the Summer With Your Neighbours events were held in April, ending another successful programme of local events in our community. Now, board members attended a number of local Anzac services. These were held at Hornby War Memorial. The site is located in the grounds of Hornby Primary School at Waterloo Road. The Holswell War Memorial, where the site is adjacent to the Holswell Domain along Holswell Road. There was also the Twentieth Battalion Association Commemoration Service at James Dean's Close Ricketton. The University of Canterbury Student Association, Association also hosted an Anzac service at Mata Riki Quad inside the university. And there was also the Templeton RSA Anzac Service at Templeton. And then the Wigram Anzac Service was held um at the Air Force Museum of New Zealand with a P eight Poseidon airplane flying over the museum just before the twelve noon Anzac service. Now, the board made and spoke to its submissions on proposed changes to the council's draft Dog Control Bylaw and Policy twenty twenty-four, the draft Parks and Reserves Bylaw twenty twenty-five and the draft Trade Waste Bylaw twenty twenty-five. Now, before I end my presentation, I would just like to update the council that the board has confirmed the appointment of um Mr Luke Chandler to the Waipuna Holswell Hornby Ricketton Community Board for the remaining five months of its term. Mr Chandler will be sworn in at the board's next ordinary meeting on May fifteenth. Maraming salamat po. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? No, thank you to both of you for coming in. Well done. Thank you. Okay, and last but certainly not least, there's Paul and Jackie for um coastal Burwood-Limwood. Hello there.
Hello. Good morning to the Christchurch Truancy Committee.
How can we help you?
Yeah, it's not, it's not me who needs your help. It's uh, it's David Seymour. Um, yamihinui kia kato. Um, uh, just as usual, some highlights from our community board area. Um, so uh, Youth and Cultural Development, um, YCD hosted a House of Hoops Grand Final at Thompson Park in New Brighton. Uh, a great conclusion for teams uh who worked hard uh to be there after qualifying in previous heats held at uh Tepoke Toitoy uh in Limwood and Waini Park. Uh, this great series was hosted uh ho- over the last ten weeks uh and supported uh through funding from the Waitea Community Board. Uh, we also have a, a cool mural uh that has been painted. Congratulations uh to Hugo for successfully naming a new mural design uh that, that will, uh, when it's finished, brightens the building uh adjacent to the Parklands Reserve and Parklands Community Centre. And the event was extra special uh with members of the Police Community Team enjoying the celebration and supporting Hugo's achievement. Um, and a huge thank you to Parklands Network, Hui Group, who lead the organisation of the mural project and the naming competition, creating a wonderful opportunity for the community. Uh, and also we had a strengthening uh Communities uh uh Funding Expo. Uh, so in preparation for that, uh, for the strength of the communities round, uh, the community governance team uh successfully hosted two funding expos. The expos provided local community groups with information about the funding opportunities and the upcoming transition to the new Smarti Grants uh funding system. Representatives from other key funders, uh, including the Rata Foundation, Department of Internal Affairs and Sport Canterbury were also present to support the events. And just over eighty people attended uh both expos, so highlighting a strong community interest and engagement. Uh, now on to our advocacy section.
Good morning, everyone. Now, we've mentioned Portlink many, many times and I am going to mention it again, but more so um because we know that the people who live adjacent to Portlink have had their hearts ripped out and they get to live with noise and dust and all that's still ongoing. I just want to remind you that the current government is, is looking at changing the laws around resource consents and property rights. And this may mean that facilities like Portlink can expand at will without needing to get further consent. So our, uh, plea to you is that you actually look very closely around the laws and, and the plans around the residential industrial fringe going further, so that more of our residents are not impacted in this way.
Um, and just on the, the LAP, um, above you'll see an image of what um I call the Chanda Rotunda. Uh, it's in Woodham Park. Uh, before the local bottle store um had their licence cancelled, the Chanda Rotunda was the local bar. I think four times now where the community have had people try and open a new store there. And now we've had another applicant put their application in. The applicants are trying to get in before the new LAP rules could be in place. So it's a deprived area. It's about eight point five out of ten on the deprivation index. And also about a hundred and sixty metres away from a school and a preschool. It's clearly not a suitable location for a bottle stool. And liquor barons target communities like ours because they think we're easy targets. Takes a lot of work to fight them off, uh, but we're good for it, but we shouldn't have to do it. And that's why we need the LAP. And Jackie?
Okay. Um, I'd like to give a big shout out to the community of the Smith Street Gardens this morning. Um, just over a week ago, there was a big fear in the community that gardens were going to close. But that community has rallied like no other and we've had people coming out of the woodwork from all across the city to, to support this garden, to um step forward to take places on the board, people wanting to volunteer and people offering money to keep this garden open. So you may have seen in the news, I could not be more thrilled that the fact that this garden is going to stay open. Because, as I've said before, this garden is a community hub. It provides a place of connection for people from all over. There's a chap, the buses from New Brighton every day to volunteer in the garden and have connection with people there. So incredibly happy this week for everyone to know that the garden will be continuing. And the community, the way they rallied has just floored me. So just a shout out to them. Thank you.
And I must say, Jackie, that the shout out actually goes to you for bringing it to everyone's attention and um the, the amount of effort you did and you're, you're on TV there, fly- flying the flag. So well done you.
Thank you.
So, excellent. Any questions? Sorry, Kelly had one in, Tim.
Yeah, just in uh terms of Portlink, um, I went past on Sunday. I was shocked at, at how high it is. Um, is it growing? That, that, are they putting more containers on?
Um, it, it, it's, it's able to, it's quite, it's legitimately able to grow. Um, that is the short answer to, to where it is now.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're allowed to. Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Righty, righty, Tim, Tim?
Yeah, look, and, and thank you for the work you're doing with Portlink. It's just, you know, you mentioned the present government. Let's be honest. The RMA has, as a lawyer had told me, has made more millionaires than any other piece of legislation in New Zealand. So it has been a failure and it's changed so much. What is its true principle? And I think we've got to look at central government and both, whatever political parties it is.
Yes.
It is not doing what it's intended to do. I chose not to renew my commissioner's qualification because I've, I was banned from talking for, representing my community in one hearing. I mean, it's just a farce really, isn't it?
It is.
So um, yeah, I just, keep fighting.
Allowing people just to do what they want isn't a solution either though, Tim.
It is, it is legislation from central government that, that controls everything and it's got to change for the good of the, all communities. And uh, thank you for your um pers- persistent reminders. So thank you.
Thank, thank you to both of you. Thank you very much.
Persistent reminders.
For your gardening expertise.
And that, yes. Thank you.
Good to go. Okay, thank you to all our community boards. I'll now ask for, I'll move it and the second is Tim uh to receive these monthly reports. All those in favour, I against, thank you. We have no public participation today or petition, so we'll move on to the confirmation of minutes. Um, we've got numbers five, six, seven, eight, nine, twenty-four and twenty-five. I'll put them, Kelly's happy to move them and Jake's happy to second them. We'll put them all together as one. All of those in favour? I against, thanks Carrie. So now we've got um the one and only pa- Part A report for item eleven. The, did someone say happy to move? And, and I'm happy to second it. It's very clear that um there's some well-used bus stops. NZTA have given us some money for some bus shelters and if we don't use them, they'll take them back. So I'm, no discussion or anything. I'm more than happy to put that. All those in favour? I against, thanks Carrie. Against, Carrie, none, no, Carrie, yeah. Right, number twelve. Local water done well, service delivery model. Sam's happy to move and Tim's more than happy to second. We're, don't let me put words in your mouth. I'm more than happy to um suggest that we put it, but does anyone want to hear what's going on? Because we've done a lot of work. Very, right. Yeah, we don't, give us a brief outline. Discussion, okay.
Yeah. Look, just really briefly, like, thank you for all the work on this and that the submitters were clearly this is in, in council. And I think, and it also means that um our residents continue to have that close contact with um elected members, decision-makers and staff, if they've got any issues around their uh water services delivery. So I'm really comfortable with um putting this in with our um, our, our, our model and as our pri- primary option and to continue with delivering the water in-house ourselves. And I think we're doing, I'll be supporting this today. So thank you.
Okay, so I got a little excited in the head of myself. Sorry, there was a question from Sarah. And Yanni, yep.
Thanks so much. Um. While I'm in favour of the proposal, what structures are in place? So in, in theory, government was setting this up to ensure that water improves over time um and that funding is there available to do it. Um, with the political decision-making and um sort of short, you know, electoral cycles, those kind of things um and LTPs, sometimes funding gets pushed out and work doesn't happen, which is why we're in the state we're in nationally. What structures have the government put in place to ensure that the work actually does happen um and doesn't get deferred?
So there's, there's councillor, there's two um significant monitoring regimes. This is to see that we uh meet the requirements under the new bills and the acts. Um, we have both Tomata Arowa and the Commerce Commission uh that will be uh monitoring us to make sure that we do achieve um those standards and what we have to do.
Yeah. And what are the implications if we're not?
Uh, there's powers within the act to um to bring in monitoring and, and or administrative. Um, the minister has the, the uh powers to do that if they feel that's not being done. That's correct.
Yeah, that's right.
And do we know yet exactly what they're going, they're going to require us to achieve?
Um, I guess the answer to that is, is partially. Some of the, some of those uh bills are still going through. Um, and some of those um, some of those requirements are still being written. But in general, we, we believe we know, certainly in terms of uh Tomata Arowa, in terms of the standards. And um we've uh, we've had discussions with, with uh, for example, some of our um council partners in terms of how they deal with um uh Commerce Commission. Uh, we've had a, a very informative session with um uh O'Ryan's to their experiences with it. So we, we do get a bit of a feel for uh what is coming, yeah.
Yeah. And what changes will it mean for our next sort of annual plan and long-term plan when it comes to structuring stuff?
Uh, that might be a bit early to say on that councillor, but uh certainly the next stage after today uh would be to um basically to nail down the Water Service Delivery Plan, which we'll be bringing back to you, which, which looks forward and um proposes the operating model. So that, that will be coming back to council before we have to get the CE to sign off and submit it in September.
Okay, thanks.
Wonderful. Uh, Yanni, please, then, Aaron.
Oh, cool. Um, based on what we heard-
Oh, cool. Um, based on what we heard yesterday from the water regulator, which sounded very promising about working with us. The mo- the preferred option, will, will that give us the best chance to work through those issues with the regulator as opposed to having a separate body?
Um, councillor, I guess the only way I can answer that is the, um, the C C O model will have a very, very, um, I guess narrow focus on what they need to do. They will have to comply with regulations and that is, that's their role. Um, they, and, um, the wor- there is not a requirement for them to look broader than that. So if, if you are talking in terms of things that the act specifically requires us to do, um, in terms of, say, water quality, um, some of those other, um, I guess community and cultural impacts won't, won't be as important to a C C O, it won't be a requirement. They will be required to deliver safe water and that's, that's where it goes from there. So that's, that's about the only way I can answer it because, um, uh, as we've stated before, either model will work, but it's, it's where you want to go in terms of that community influence.
So basically, from what we've heard yesterday, where the water regulator is really keen to work with us on what's required for an exemption, um, that, you know, having the option to stay in-house gives us the greater degree of flexibility around what options we may choose if we wish to take chlorine out.
That would be my take on it councillor, um, a C C O's job, the, uh, the cheapest way to ensure safe water is for put chlorine in it.
Great, okay, thank you. Yeah, good answer. Thank you. Uh, Aaron.
Yeah, just over some of the questions around, um, the future delivery and changing in, uh, L T Ps and annual plans. Um, is there going to be a requirement to standardise across the country how water is paid for, given we're an outlier? And, uh, cause we're not volumetric, uh, all the other main centres I think are. And we charge based on the capital value of the property, not your water usage, which is very odd. Will there be a requirement that we standardise across the country and then that money's ring fenced? So then that then for the delivery of water, which then rules out political interference when you get a, a change of council and people want to spend the money on community centres rather than water pipes?
Councillor, uh, I think there's two parts to that. Um, under the legislation, if I'm wrong, the, if it, a C C O must move to volumetric charging within five years?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah.
A C C O, what about an in-house model?
No, there's no requirement for it to do so. Um, uh, sorry, not volumetric charging, it must move to a system which is not based on property value. That's, uh, there's a requirement in the bill.
So everyone has to do.
For a C C O. Not if you keep it in-house.
Why?
That's just the way the bill's written.
Okay, that really makes no sense.
Um, I don't write the bill.
Right, thank you, Aaron. Okay, so we have a mover and seconder is on it. That's the question, sorry. Now we go, is there any more debate? Kelly?
Um, yeah, look, um, I'm really happy to support this, like Pauline. Um, I think the council three waters team are first class and, um, this is a real testament to the work that they've done over the years. I mean, obviously there will always be challenges, um, but you know, there's overwhelming public support for keeping it in-house and, um, look, the regulator told us yesterday uh, that our water is of the highest quality and hopefully down the track, um, there will be some way to improve that. And, um, and in terms of getting chlorine out, but, um, look, I'm really supportive of this and, uh, I think it'll, uh, be a, a good decision for the city.
Excellent. Aaron?
Yeah, uh, there has been overwhelming feedback to go for an in-house model. Um, I, and I have great confidence in the staff. Uh, the bit that I have real issue with is the way we charge for water in Christchurch and I think that needs to be. Um, I'll reluctantly support going with an in-house model because if we went with the C C O model, uh, today, we would then be put in a position that we would, uh, standardise our charging for the delivery of water. Um, and it's alarming the difference that different people pay across the city. Uh, and then we tried to use the, uh, excess charging to curb people's use of water where clearly the evidence is that if we went to volumetric would, um, make, uh, people be a lot more responsible for their water usage, uh, across the city. Um, so I reluctantly support us doing the in-house model, but I encourage us to have that conversation with the public around the standardising of our, uh, of our charging system for water. Um, I really do believe that we should be going to volumetric and we have to be honest with our public and get them to feed back to us on that. So the sooner we can do that as a council, uh, the better.
Okay, uh, anyone else want to have any five, five bob's worth? Uh, Yanni?
Yeah, I think it's quite timely that we're discussing this today, particularly with, um, the new information from the water regulator. But also, um, just hearing, you know, the impact of decisions we made previously around the three waters, for example, with the stormwater and the benefits that that's given to a community. So I, I'm strongly in favour of keeping this in-house. I think the benefits are really, really apparent. Uh, that is that we get greater discretion over what we choose to do as a city to meet both the, um, the, the, the regulations, but also the community concerns around where we invest. So, yeah, we've got a lot of work to do in the water space, but we've actually also been, as a city, been through a heck of a lot. Um, if you look at the data pre-earthquake and post-earthquake, with the result of the repairs or the way the repairs were done, we do have a lot of work going forward, but as a city, we've actually done a heck of a lot of good work prior to the earthquake and post-earthquake, particularly around some of the issues on, on the peninsula, which again we inherited without any recognition from central government as to the cost that that put on us as a city without any say. So, look, I think this council, um, we, you know, we, we can always strive to do better, but when we reflect on some of the really positive things that, um, have been done, uh, when we've kept water in-house, I, I think it's clear that that is the best option going forward. That gives the greatest environmental benefit and the greatest, uh, benefit to delivering, uh, our water services across the three waters. So, uh, I'm very supportive of the preferred option, noting that that was the majority of submitters' support as well.
Roger, thank you. Sarah?
Uh, Kiorakoto, thanks for, uh, to staff for all of the, um, background work that went on to get this process underway and, and to this point. While I'm in favour of local control and democratic control, it does come with a huge responsibility on elected members to make sure that we are doing the work. We have had advice from staff over a, a number of years about the, the state of our drinking water reticulation, for example. Our wastewater treatment, um, plants on Banks Peninsula especially are under significant pressure and are well past the time where they need upgrading. That work has been slow, um, it hasn't been prioritised. It's partly through, um, you know, a lack of, um, uh, motivation. It's partly through, um, processes that are not helpful. But as an elected council, we need to be all over where our water's at. We need to know, um, the state of our pipes and we need to be prioritising, um, all of that work. Even if it means, um, increasing rates to pay for it. Because it is our responsibility to make sure that the water in the city flows and it is safe and clean and good for people to drink. Um, and that the wastewater is taken away and that the stormwater is taken away, um, appropriately and efficiently. And that we don't let our assets sweat, um, in the way they have in the past. So I'm in favour of this. I think that we do need local democratic, democratic control. Um, but we need to take responsibility for that. We can't do things like, um, pushing out work on stormwater basins. We've seen that in the last few weeks. We can't push out our wastewater, uh, treatment on Banks Peninsula until the point where those systems just break. Um, because we will not be thanked for that by the communities. Thanks.
Okay, and Sam?
Um, thank you. I'm, look, I'm really pleased with this. I think the reality is that this is what we said at the very beginning of this process when, uh, D I A came down and tried to change the system entirely. We said we do not have an issue with that water in Christchurch. Uh, we're of, we have enough economy of scale as a council to deliver it effectively. And all we've done is listened to the feedback from the community, which says that we don't need a separate board set up uh, to then create another administration on something that works so collaboratively across the council. So this is a bit like that sort of validation, that actually what we said at the very beginning is where the community were at. Um, but actually where we knew we're at with our water. And the good thing about this, I think the legislation makes sense in terms of, um, the Commerce Commission and the regulation that sits in behind it. Um, because it prevents councils, uh, from neglecting their responsibilities. Uh, and actually I don't think this council does and it hasn't, because if you look at what we do through annual plans and long-term plans, we talk about deliverability. There is no point putting money on budget that cannot be spent, but actually there's better to put programmes on that can be delivered. If you think, think about the Accra treatment plant, um, that's not from a will from council, uh, to not do. That literally is held up in consenting issues. So actually, if we're going to look at how we do best for the city, we should be lobbying government and advocating every submission that comes through around how we refine the regulatory process that sits behind all of this stuff. Uh, we've got the capacity within our financial structure at council to deliver this stuff. We do it every year and we do it really well. There has never been a willingness, or an unwillingness, I should say, for the council to not deliver this stuff. It's actually about capacity and getting the work out the door. So the best thing we can do as a council is collectively unite to say, how do we speed up or fast track uh, regulatory regimes, uh, so that stuff can be done. And I think if everyone collectively did that, we'd be in a really good place. Thanks.
Thank you, Sam. Uh, and lastly, me, I'm very happy for what we've done. We, as, as, uh, Sam said, we've, um, listened to the community. It seems it is the right thing to do. The thing that worried me the most was, um, as we've heard, we are delivering, um, our water at the mo- at the moment and our, um, um, with, with the amount of money that we've got. We, we've got a two hundred and eighty percent, um, cap on the amount of money we can borrow. The thing that worried the living daylights out of me, that if we went to a C C O, they were actually allowed, and not saying they would, but they would be allowed to go to five hundred percent. And we've got enough borrow- money borrowed at the moment, little have any more. So, um, I'm more than happy to, um, support this. So I will put that, all those in favour? I against? Thank you, that very much, that is carried. Brilliant. Right. Tyler, you're up. Number thirteen, hearings panel on, uh, proposed trade waste by law.
Cool. Uh, Kiorakoto, um, it was my pleasure to be the chairperson of, um, this hearings panel and also the parks, uh, panel. And just a quick introduction, this bylaw regulates the discharges of commercial industrial waste into our wastewater network. And essentially it's the framework for trade waste consent. Um, legislation requires council to complete a review of our existing bylaw by twenty-sixth November this year. Um, hence why we're running this, uh, panel. And council considered the review of the bylaw on sixth November last year and approved the draft bylaw for consultation. The proposed bylaw was not substantially different from our current one, but a few changes were proposed to address emerging issues. The most notable changes introduced through this review are for stricter management of trade wastes containing silt and sediments or P F As. These types of discharges are problematic, uh, either for the wastewater network, so, either for the wastewater network itself or for the receiving environment. Uh, there is a lot of involvement in this and it's quite high level. Um, I'd also like to invite staff here, um, to come if there is going to be any questions relating to those high-level parts, um, and the panel's recommendations. Um, but I'll quickly just go over the key changes made to the bylaw through the recent review. And, um, they are a reduced limit, um, a hundred grams, um, per meter cube for silt and sediments. Um, P F As including, um, P F Os and P F H excesses. An excessive level is recommended by the Environment Protection, Protection Agency or the Ministry for the Environment. I prohibited characteristics of tradeway discharge and they're subject to conditional consent in accordance with clause thirteen, um, bracketed four. Um, so long story short, the panel didn't actually make too many changes in regards to, um, the recommendations provided by staff. Um, there were some small ones around P F As and P F Os, but I'm quite happy to see if staff, um, would answer any questions, if we have any. If not, um, I'm really keen to move this forward.
You'll move it? Okay, Tim, you, you, Tim's have, Tim's happy to second it. Okay. I've got a question for, um, Tim, up there, Tim. Just give me a little bit of background and it's a little bit of background on the two items there in item six point three, mainly for the people that are listening on the de-watering defin- definition and what, why did you change that or? Cause not everyone can read what we can read. And the little bit on that trade waste definition. I know, um, Tyler talked about it a little bit. Mainly, mainly the de-watering, that please. Just a little, not, not much, just a little bit.
I can, I can respond to that one. So in terms of trade waste, we had, uh, one submitter concerned that trade waste might unintentionally um, capture discharge which isn't actually from trade processes. So they didn't want, just because they're a trade premise, um, things like their general wastewater to be captured and therefore require a trade waste consent. And of course, that's not the intention at all. So we've just made a few tweaks to that definition to try to make that even clearer. That it's only where, um, waste is going into the wastewater network as a result of a trade process. That's when the trade waste consent was required. Um, and the other one was just in relation to de-watering. Um, and that was just a clarification that stormwater isn't de-watering. So we're actually talking about when, um, so construction phase, when water's being pumped out of the ground. That's what we're meaning when we're talking about de-watering. So just clarifying those terms.
Yeah, so just in my head, cause I've done a bit of de-watering and I even see it on the, uh, building next door. They won't pay trade waste charges on de-watering, if I understand.
No, typically not. In my, in the vast majority of cases, they won't. Um, in some cases, de-watering, uh, is deemed essentially too contaminated to go to the. And in that circumstance, they do have to go to the wastewater network and therefore need, um, council approval to be put through that wastewater system.
Absolutely.
Um, so in that case, they need a trade waste consent, but that is.
Fantastic answer. That's great. So we have a mover and a seconder. Is there any more questions? Any discussion? Tim?
Um, yeah, look, I just wanted to thank, um, Ty, Council Harrison Hunt for his chairing. It was high level and technical and, um, he's took the time and really stepped up to the, the, the plate. So on behalf of the council, thank you very much for your chairing. It's well done.
So with that, I will put that, all those in favour? I against? Thank you, that's carried. Brilliant. Okay, so now we're up to item fourteen. Uh, the Ferumid Trust, this is from the Citywide Discretionary Response Fund application. So we've got, um, who we got? Can't see.
Josh and Gary.
Josh and Gary, yep.
Yeah.
Now, if we have to, um, we'll need to move into P except the meeting wants to discuss attachment A, but I don't imagine we will, we're not putting words anywhere in our mouth. So fire away, gents.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, uh, we'll take the reporters' read, but just by way of, um, update is, uh, on the finances of the D R F because the funds are spent throughout the year. Um, if, if we assume that the recommendations in agenda item fifteen go through, there'll be eighty-five thousand in the budget. Um, if you were to grant, uh, a grant to Ferumid today, that would leave you with about forty. Uh, we currently have twenty thousand that we're processing currently. So that's applications that have been made. Uh, we've got about another sixty thousand worth of applications that, um, are imminent, uh, to be coming in. So, uh, the fund we expect will be fully expended probably by the end of, uh, by the end of May. Thanks.
Victoria then, Matt.
Thank you very much. Your team's been working closely with the Ferumid Trust for some time. How long is it that they've known that there was going to be the shortfall?
I think it's a difficult question. Um, they, they had applied to the Strengthening Communities Fund for, for three hundred. And I think they were disappointed when they received less than that. Um, however, they did have the, the year, um, since they received that, um, to, to budget across the year. Uh, we received this application, um, earlier in the year and, and bringing it to you. Um, uh, because essentially they've, they've reached the end of their, their financial, uh, line. They did think that they would have a little more breathing room, uh, and they, they came to us a couple of weeks back, uh, essentially saying that because it was a particularly wet Easter period, um, that some of their event income, um, was a bit hampered. Um, and so it's brought things a bit closer in again.
I just had one more to go. Was it, have, have, have you seen anything from the trust? Uh, uh, that gives you confidence around their cutting the cloth? Uh a, that gives you confidence around their cutting the cloth to fit? I mean, they've got their own budget envelope. What else have they done to try and avoid this application? Have you seen any evidence of that, please?
I think it would be fair to say that some of the, the investment over the previous years. Um was aimed at trying to bring them to a place of financial sustainability uh within kind of what had been historic levels of funding. Um so we've seen really positive things from the trust in terms of the activities that they've undertaken. And, and a lot of the recommendations from video have, uh have been implemented. Um but the financial sustainability, realistically, it looks uh a ways off for them, yeah.
Thank you. Uh I'll just sneak in before Mark and Tyler, just, and John might be able to answer this. Last year, they shut for three months to, to save a few bob.
Correct.
Um and they use that for tidying up things, uh because the people coming through the gate was probably quite negligible. Are they thinking of doing that again?
They're not planning on it.
One of the reasons they're making this application and other applications is to keep going.
Okay, no, that's fine. Mark, please.
Thank you. Um my question's similar, along those similar lines. Do we know? The plans of the trust, if this is declined today, are they likely to close for a few months or?
The, the trusts have told us that if they didn't receive the funding today, that, that they'd need to look at, at closure. Um uh I would assume presumably that they would look at an application to the Strengthening Communities Fund. Um but that they'd still be waiting on the um the annual plan process as well. Uh yeah.
Thank you.
Done. Uh Tyler?
Kierakos. Um I've got a couple of quick questions. The first one is uh other funding. Uh are they now able to apply for RATA funding now that they've had that restructure?
Uh my understanding is that they can apply, um and I believe that they. Um are making approaches. I don't know how that's gone.
Okay, so in your experience, would you say that RATA's a, a viable option now that they've had that restructure?
We probably can't speak for RATA, but um.
I think, I, I, I think there's some work that needs to be done and I'm not sure how far that's got with RATA around their change of direction.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm trying to read between the lines here. Uh so the next, the next question is around, o- either we give them all of the forty eight or nothing. Is that because no matter what we give them, if it's not forty eight, then they can't really operate as, as what they're.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I went and re clarified uh with the trust that I said, would any kind of interim uh work? And essentially, that they said if they'd known about the Easter uh rainfall, they probably would have applied for more. Um so, so for them, it really is a make or break um situation with this.
Okay, Mel.
Thank you.
So this is just to tide them over for May-June?
Correct, yeah. It's to, it's to see them through until uh the outcome of the annual plan, yeah.
Pauline?
Just to clarify there, though, it's not, it's not really May-June. Didn't they come to you in February? Is it for a longer period?
No, they came after the councillors went and visited, which was, I think, uh start of March.
So, so in other words, but just clarifying what councillor Coker asked, is it, is this money just for two months or did they need it earlier?
I, I think they, they might have applied for it earlier, but it's to get them through to the, to the annual.
The annual plan.
Yeah.
And Josh, did you say it, they said it will make or break them, this money?
Uh they wouldn't have used those words, but they indicated to us that they'd be looking at closure if, if they didn't receive it, yeah.
Permanent closure?
I can't speak to that.
The winter.
I'd imagine the closure would be until they hear the annual plan decision, and then they'd have to make future decisions after that.
Right. Any more questions? Tim?
Yeah, um the D R F is specifically, we would call it, um the, um. This, it's for an emergency or unforeseen circumstance. That is exactly what it is for. This has, but they've obviously known they're gonna have a, it seems to me that because of the to-ing and fro-ing, they've. They've known about this, so it's not a surprise per se. Is that, is that a fair statement?
Hmm. They, they had the, the confirmed income from the Strengthening Communities Fund. Um you're right in that the, the criteria of the discretionary response fund is for unforeseen or unexpected. Um so they have had months of, of uh foreseeing this financial uh situation, I think that'd be fair to say.
Cool, thank you.
Andrew?
Thank you. Uh are you able to touch a bit on why they are choosing to open through winter this year?
Yeah, uh, uh, the group may have to speak on that, but I'd, I'd assume it would be to do with uh continuity of services and things like that, but.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Any more questions? Mel? Yep, just let me get my head around that. Just kidding. So is everyone, where everyone know where we are? Option two, yep. I'm, I'm more than happy to second option two. Do you want a couple of mo? Right, we have a, oh, we haven't had the morning, Tim. That's near right. We'll have ten minutes. How's that? About five past eleven.
Right, so where are we at? We've got a mover and second for that there, which is, yep, which is right in front of us. Is there any debate it'll be on that? Yeah, Tyler?
Um, I don't think I can support this today. I really wish that there was a partial payment that was feasible for the trust. Forty-eight thousand seems like a fair bit, especially when the funds running out quite quickly. Therefore, I won't be able to support this. We've got a few more projects coming up in the future, coming out of the DRF. I do appreciate that the Ferumede Trust has made some significant changes with the way that they've been doing things. However, forty-eight thousand is just the number for me. There is no big qualms with the way that Ferumede's running, so I won't be supporting this today. Mark?
Thank you. Having been one of the few select councillors who went and visited Ferumede back in March, I would encourage my colleagues around the table to support them today. They have made a significant change in their operation out there. They've taken on the BDO report that we had done, and they really are in a much better place than they ever have been. So I'm, you know, encouraged to see their progress, and certainly happy to support this today and encourage my colleagues to look at supporting them as well.
Yanni, please.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I'll also be supporting this today. I do note that they have made significant progress. And, you know, unfortunately, we've seen with bad weather can have a massive impact on how they're going. And, you know, I just think in terms of an organisation like this, to be faced with, if we don't fund it, it being closed, I think would be a real loss to the community. I do think we need to continue to work towards a better funding model, and we need to work with RATA. And I, you know, from my understanding, is they are making progress at rebuilding relationships with places like the Ministry of Education and RATA to look at what can be done going forward. So this gives us a bit more time to work that through before what will be really the key decision on this organisation obviously will be in the draft annual plan deliberations. But, you know, I just wanted to acknowledge the significant work that they've done. And that, you know, the option to me about just not approving this funding and leaving them to close is not something that I would support. Therefore, I'll support the funding. I do accept it's a high amount for our discretionary, recognise that. But, you know, I think to me, this is something that we need to do in the short term.
Roger. Thank you. Tim?
Yeah, thank you. And like my colleagues around the table, I will acknowledge the work that they have done to move forward to where they were. But I don't believe that this is the right fund for them to apply for for this. It's very clear what this is. Although it's said discretionary, it is actually for unforeseen situations. And from what I've understood, hopefully correctly, this has been a slow train coming, so they saw it coming. I will not be voting against it, so I'm going to be abstaining because I do acknowledge the work that they have done, and they are on a journey. But I just don't, events in Christchurch or anywhere in the South Island or New Zealand, June, July, August are known to be hard, and you've got to have a business plan around it. So they are on a journey, I acknowledge that, and that's why I will not be voting against it. But I can't support it, so.
Okay. Pauline?
Thank you. Look, I support everything that councillor Johansson said, and I think they have made considerable improvements, and they're on the up and up. But these changes don't kick in overnight, and so they do need some time to get on their feet. It is a gem for Christchurch, but we've got several of these. You know, we've got Irana Park, we've got the Arts Centre, we've got several. But I think we need to, in the next council term, and we need to really seriously look at how we're going to support all these organisations with, hopefully, multi-year funding, and make sure that that money is well invested, and that we also, we walk alongside them. We can't run it for them, but we need to give them as much support as we can. And I do acknowledge that the staff are working really closely, particularly with Ferumede at the moment. So thank you for that. But I think we just need to give them a bit more time, and I would not like to see it close at this stage. I'm particularly encouraged that they're picking up on that education programme that they were running, and they did lose that because they lost the funding for that. And hopefully they'll get that back again, because to see the kids down there, they just get such a buzz out of it. So, yeah, today, I will support this today. And not having any oversight on what is coming to us, it's a bit difficult. But there will be some money left in here, and then the fund will be refreshed in July. So today I'll support this, and I encourage you to do so.
Any more discussion? I'll throw my five bobs with it. If you've ever seen a place that runs on the smell of an oily rag go down there, there's so many volunteers and people that actually put their heart and soul into it, especially the locomotive department. Right at the moment, we do have the money, and as Pauline said, the money will be topped up in July, end of July. Notwithstanding, it is a fair bit of money. But when you do that versus what Auckland give Motet, now I know it's not a target, we're way, way, way behind the eight ball on how we support this place. So I will certainly be supporting it because there's a lot of effort gone into it over the years, and it's well worth keeping anyone else. Right, we have a mover and second. All of those in favour of what's the, up the top, down the bottom, sorry. All those in favour, aye? All those against? Let's carry. There was three on. Abstention, okay. Against? Abstention from Andre as well. So you've got two abstentions and two zeros. Okay. Righto. Thank you very much, everyone. So we're now up to number fifteen. Here's a surprise, citywide discretionary response fund applications. Jackie, hello Jackie.
I'm from the community funding team, so I'm here to talk to the rest of the discretionary response fund applications for May. So we have three in the fund. Screen Edge Limited with Doc Edge International Documentary, Canterbury Mathematical Association with Cantermath, and New Zealand Opera with additional support for New Zealand Opera's third season.
Right, everyone, that's pretty self-explanatory. Questions? Yeah, all right, Tim will move it. And anyone wants, yeah, there was questions. Yeah, anyone want second? And anyone wants, yeah, there was questions. Yeah, anyone want second? Well, I've got, I'll second it. Right, questions? Was Sarah and Celeste and Tyler? Tyler was first, sorry, yep.
Kilda, just a quick question around the NZO and what schools that they work with.
That question has been asked, it wasn't in their application, but it has been asked to them and I might say that's all we can say. So I've requested information from the NZO but haven't been updated. So we did discuss, I have a semi-regular catch-up with the CE and we did discuss schools following deliberations around the last strengthening communities and have pointed them to look in the direction of schools that are both based within our territory but also to those schools which might be the old decile one too, sort of profile as well.
Okay, I know, I've asked this question multiple times for NZO, particularly around annual plan and long-term plan and a lot of them weren't quite clear. But it was involved, it was included in the rationale which said it'll involve singers from AJA with an invitation to a range of schools to participate, particularly those with the greatest need. I'd love to get some more information on that. The next question is around the salaries and wages. Are the staff based here?
Not the core staff on the NZO, no. And I'm not, I did check on the website this morning, I'm not sure where the primary performers are based, but potentially Auckland or across the country, yeah.
Okay. That's all the questions I've got for now.
Thank you, mate. Sarah, please.
Thanks. I've just got a question about how we work out what is school-related and what is not school-related. So we've got Cantamath and it's an external, it's a mixture of that and the opera. It's, we've got an external organisation running an outside-of-school activity that happens to be on a school subject, so maths, and gets a couple of thousand kids together to have a big hooey. They've been, you know, great to watch in the past. But that's, we're told, no, that's educational. And then we've got New Zealand Opera, which while it's called New Zealand Opera, it's music, which is also a school subject, doing something proposed in schools and that's not, like it's a music thing within schools and that's not primarily schools. Do you know what I mean? It's like, they're both, this is more around why we don't found Cantamath probably, but it's, yeah, they're both kind of school-related and where do we draw that line?
So with the community involvement in the NZ Opera and that includes reaching out through schools to involve students, they will work with the professional musicians and performers and they will be performing at the Isaac Theatre Royal, so it's not for activity that takes place in the school auditoriums.
Yeah, but neither does Cantamath, you know. It's just like, where do we draw that and how do we draw that? Maths is a, you know, a core subject at school, but actually music is to a primary school. Like, how do we sort that?
Yeah, it is, yeah, it is a hard one to distinguish at times. For the Cantamaths, the rationale looked at the project outcomes that the organisation provided and a lot of them, or they were all focused on goals that better align with industry and education outcomes rather than the things that our strengthening community strategy talks to. So that was the rationale for that one.
Okay, and how does the opera one then talk to our strengthening community strategy?
Well, it'll talk to certain pillars of it, but we do take a Toyo Tautahi lens across that and so what's the benefit for arts and culture across the city and the opportunities it creates for rates of participation and opportunities for participation across age groups.
Yeah, and the thing is, the thing is, like, they're worthy kind of things, right? It's just weird things. So if it's a Toyo Tautahi thing, should it come under like a Toyo Tautahi kind of funding rather than strengthening? It's that, or just because there's no funding with that?
The arts funding sits within the strengthening communities poll of funding.
Okay, so it's more out of that. Okay, so the other question on the opera one was, what's meant by additional funding? And how did we not see this coming when we look at, like, compared to Fairyme?
So when we-
Think things coming or not?
When we assessed the last strengthening communities application, we noted a decline in the level of activity in the city and we did challenge, that was a challenge we gave back to NZO, you know, what are you doing here? So what they've come back with is we've actually got an additional program, it's community-based, so they'll be offering and leading that programming here, also presenting and offering the same opportunity in Wellington and Auckland. And so that's in addition to what we were looking at in terms of their programming at the time for last year. So this funding is to support activity to happen in the lead-up to the staging of the opera in early September.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
I think the question's been asked, but I'll just sort of pick up on it again. I think we've asked it a few times and I'm surprised they haven't provided any data about the schools because it's quite an important part of their application.
I do know that they reached out to the schools and I'm sorry, I didn't keep, it was in a meeting and I didn't keep a list of the schools' names that I offered. It was quite broad, quite a lengthy list and I know they went away and were working with that list, how far through, whether, you know, how much, how many of the schools took up the opportunity, I'm not sure.
Do you think if they were given, sort of, moved ahead with this, they would report back on what that looks like in practice? Because I'm wondering if they send out an invitation, but the schools, some schools don't have an opera or a music programme, specialist music programme, whether there'll be much uptake in those areas where it might not, they might need a bit more support to get involved. So I'm not quite sure what that looks like in the application. It's sort of like, is it an email invitation or is it like more facilitated support to get people involved?
We can make those follow-up questions and certainly we expect to see NZO come back through the next strengthening communities. So they'll be, you know, they'll be needing to-
Report back and stuff.
Yeah, report back and also express how they're managing those, that community engagement, yeah.
There's two questions around the Cantamath one. One is, why have they come to us? Because they haven't come to us before, so what's changed?
I can't speak to necessarily why. I know they first came to our events team and their criteria didn't match that source of funding and then they came to us next. I understand that they have sought some other funding, some of which has been unsuccessful so far. But the event is later in the year, so I'm guessing they still have some work to do in terms of seeking corporate partnership and sponsors before then.
Yeah, it's just interesting because they've been running for decades and decades, so something's clearly changed. I was also wondering where they were wanting to, what the venue hire is because it's very expensive.
Yeah, so the venue is Wolf Brook Arena and they budgeted forty-seven thousand four hundred dollars for that.
Okay, thanks.
Kilda, do we get any reports back from those who are successful in strengthening communities and how they've gone?
Yes, we do.
Do we have access to NZO with their reports back?
Previous reports.
Yeah. Probably that will probably help us steer our direction a bit easier going forward, I guess, and seeing how they performed. Reason being is I'm not quite sold on this yet, but if I did see their performance in their last reports, it would be helpful. Would that be able to be circulated after this?
Yes, yes, we can definitely get that information.
Thank you.
Thank you. Didn't have the button down. Andre, yeah, thank you. Something I'm trying to get my head around. So we've got things like the Events Festivals Fund, there's the Creative Communities Funding and they're very, very heavily oversubscribed scans by whether it's four hundred percent, five hundred percent. So there's a lot of local organisations not being able to access funding or missing out and a lot of them applying for small amounts, might be five thousand, three thousand, and most of them are still missing out. So are they then able to then apply through discretionary response funds? Like, if we're really short on being able to fund a lot of these things, but we can fund things if we so want to through this fund, I'm just trying to get my head around where the line is drawn and if there's all these, this is a great big oversubscription of funds for creative communities type initiatives, then why would this not be contestable as in the context of all other arts programmes?
The discretionary response fund for Metro is usually for unforeseen circumstances. So it's kind of those organisations that hit a wall and something that they couldn't plan for has happened. So that's a small portion. The board tend to run their discretionary response funds where they will fund local events and things like that. So they run it quite differently. So there is that local fund available to those. Creative Communities is an external fund, so it has its own rules through Creative New Zealand and generally tends to be smaller amounts as well. So we kind of have strengthening communities, which is the one that generally they have to go to once a year.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yanni?
Yeah, thanks. My recollection, and it was a few years ago, is that Cantamath used to get some funding or support from us and I think they used to be in the town hall. So, you know, one of the changes has been the extraordinary cost now for community groups to hire the venues at Tatahi facilities. I was just wondering, is there a way that we could talk to venues at Tatahi about seeing what venue sponsorship was available to enable something like Cantamath? It just to me seems like the event that, you know, it would be great to have it in the town hall or in one of our facilities, given its significance, but I get that there's a huge funding cost.
Yeah, it might be outside of the scope of this application, but certainly we can kind of work with the relevant teams to have those conversations.
Right, okay. And are we able to check back and see if we have funded it in the past?
I can. I was just trying to do that, but I, two-factor authentication and I can't do-
Oh, yeah, no, that's cool. I just-
But I can get you that information if we've funded it.
Twenty years ago, I'm not talking like, you know, five years ago or six years ago. It would be just good to know what that funding relationship has been. If we decline it today, are they able to come back with an alternative thing? Or is it better just to lie on the table and allow that work to happen?
It's, I guess it depends on whether there's funding in the fund. Because at the moment, we're getting to the point where we might be expending the fund over the next month or so. So they can certainly apply, but then if they don't get it in before we've expended it, the next opportunity won't be till at least September, October.
And I guess moving forward, it could be a conversation of whether they would be, whether it would be better for them to apply to something like strengthening communities over DRF, just seeing as it is an annual event, it doesn't necessarily align with the criteria of needing to be unforeseen or unpredicted, which the DRF prescribes.
And do you know how much, like, what's their financial position? Like, if we decline the funding, what will happen? Will the event still go ahead or?
So that kind of detail wasn't provided to us. We only got limited information back from them when asked.
Right, okay, thanks.
Okay, so that's it. Tim?
Yeah, just a minute. Why do Cantamath want to be in the town hall or Wolf Brook Arena? They could run it anywhere really, couldn't they, in a sense of a large venue?
I couldn't speak to their preference of venue, sorry. But I believe that that was where they hosted it last year.
Okay, thank you.
Mark, is that you? No, no. Okay, so it's got a mover and second. We've had plenty of questions and I understand Kelly wants to sing to his debate, is that right, Kelly? Now you're rescinding your- I'll give it a lash. In honour of my mother, who was a singer in the Christchurch Repertory Society. I support this motion today, but that's not all that I have to say. Opera is cool, opera is fun, but personally I'd rather go for a run. I'd encourage you and you and you to support this lovely motion too. Let's have some fun, the opera season's begun. Opera all day. I'm so pleased my hearing aid back to reflect. Right, is there any more debate on this? Tyler, please.
I feel like I'm going to be a Debbie Downpuff with this, following Kelly's one.
You can deliver this through the medium of dance.
I'm more of a rapper, a bit of a rapper myself, but I'm not going to do that. But I just wanted to see if it's possible, if I could provide an alternative in my debate, which is giving the NZO twelve six five oh, which actually pays for the equipment, materials, rent and venue hire and equipment and materials again from the contribution sought towards it. That's the alternative that I wanted to see if we could add that as an amendment.
Were you, sorry, we're in debate. Were you at the briefing when they came, were you here? You might not have been, you might have been tied up. That when they came and did a briefing on how little we actually give them and how much it costs them to actually come down to Christchurch and how much people really want them down in Christchurch, obviously, Kelly. So they actually were after a little bit more.
Of course, yes, we are in debate. So you're foreshadowing. You'll be foreshadowing if this fails. No?
I had to do it, I had to do it. I can't, I had to do it during debate, obviously.
If the mover and second can agree to amend that or-
They'll probably say no, so.
Probably right.
I'll be moving it in.
Okay, so have we got any more?
Of twelve six five oh, of twelve six five oh.
No, okay. Tim?
Thank you. Look, with opera, just-
Okay, has the amendment been seconded?
So if it's a foreshadowed amendment, it doesn't need a second.
Right.
No, but you don't get a foreshadowed amendment though, right? You get an amendment or a foreshadowed motion.
Right, but so with respect to what-
Is it an amendment?
Is saying, essentially if the mover and second aren't agreeing to a reduction in the funding and recommendation for-
Sorry, no, yeah.
No, then it's only if it fails. But if you want to actually vote it, it's still an amendment.
Yes. Yeah.
So there's a choice, you've got a choice between either moving it now so people get to debate on that one first or never getting to debate on it.
If people vote against number five, then your one becomes live.
Well, point of order though, what are the rules around what is a valid amendment and what needs to be considered as a foreshadowed motion? Because we had the same thing happen with the-
The councillor can move an amendment and if he gets the second, we can choose to put the amendment first and vote on that and if that loses, go to that. Or we can treat it as a foreshadowed amendment, that we do this one first and foreshadowed motion.
Can you move an amendment during debate?
Yes, that's when you're supposed to-
That's when I'm supposed to do it.
When you're meant to move them.
Yes. Right, so what would you like to do?
What I'm hearing, councillor Johansson, you just seconded?
I'm asking to make a grant of twelve six five oh, amount of the discretionary response fund for the New Zealand Opera.
Okay, so we'll consider that an amendment then with, who was the second?
Andre, or Yanni?
Okay. Great. And then if you're happy, we can do a single debate on both the motions and the amendment on the table?
You need to just finish your same one.
Right, is that what, do that first?
Cool, I can finish my debate.
They've got a mover and second. You're cool. Have we, Yanni?
Yep, sweet. The only reason why I'm putting this up is because I had this problem in the last strengthening communities debate, which was that we were paying for Aucklanders' salaries and we're taking our money away from our discretionary response fund to actually go into Auckland's hands. That's one of the only reasons why I was hesitant to continue with this. They do provide a lot of good things in terms of the programme. However, I'd love to see some more localism involved into this, have some more citywide focus to be able to fund those who are going to be putting their money into Christchurch's pockets instead of going elsewhere, particularly when it's rate pass funds. That's my only argument, that's the only reason why. I'm asking for them to be going into equipment and materials, rent and venue hire and equipment and materials as per those last three lines in the contribution that's sought towards. We can't tell them where they should be putting it. We can't tell them where they should be putting it, but I'm wanting to note it and advise um the N Z O, this is where um I would like to intend to put the money, Kilda.
Okay, any, Tim?
Yeah, um look, it's a bit of a shame really, you know, like, we're gonna go how many warriors are from Canterbury? I mean, probably quite a few, to be quite honest, but let's be honest. We pay incentives for a lot of groups to come here for the betterment of Christchurch. Behind those stars, there are a whole network of talent that never get on stage. They never get in front of the 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 public, but they are Christchurch-based talent. They are, you know, follow-spot operators, whatever they are, sound, staging, things are built here. The main building for any um musical theatre is actually based here in Christchurch. So all of this adds to our employment. So it's, you can look at it in the face, you know, how many opera singers are from Christchurch? Actually, a hell of a lot. We are really, really lucky to to have the talent we do. And remember, New Zealand Opera started as Canterbury Opera by the the late Chris Doig. He was a great champion. He was based here. The Doigs are a great Christchurch family. We were really privileged to have that. But when we talked before about ferry med, it takes a while to change things. So suddenly they can't just come down and enter all the schools, because schools have programs, as we know. Whether a decile one or ten, they have programs and they've got to start integrating into those. So things take time to change. It's good that we're signalling that, and yes, perhaps they need to give us more info, or our staff more information about how they're going forward. But to kind of shoot them off at the pass, I think is a real mistake. We've got so much talent here. And if you look at those young New Zealand opera singers coming through, the the talent's fantastic and from all walks of life. And um I think we should be supporting them and encouraging them to come here more often.
Sarah?
Thanks so much. And I know that um for staff, you know, who there's there's limited fund and when they're doing these assessments, it's not easy. Um but what this really does highlight is that we do need to have a closer look at our criteria. You know, we've just heard a significant amount of debates about the work that New Zealand Opera are doing in schools, and yet Canterbury Math, because it was a school-based thing but happening outside of school, we drew a line there. Um so we need to, um probably ahead of the next strengthening communities round, have a a much clearer understanding um as a council, both um organisation and elective members, as to where we draw that line, what things should be the education um ministry's responsibility, which things are we willing to pick up when the education space fails, um and which things we're not. Um and our role isn't in um career development, if you like, it's in strengthening communities and community stuff. Um and so while I'm happy to support New Zealand Opera getting some money, I'm not quite sure how much at this point, um I struggle with not supporting such an amazing event as Canterbury Math, which I'm pretty sure we have funded at some point in the past, like we've seen it come through strengthening communities and things. Um at at other at other times, and and I've watched my kids there at Wolfbrook, um which must have been many years ago now because they're in their late teens. So we do need to have a clearer understanding of that um as we go forward. Thanks.
Yanni? Yeah, Yanni, yeah?
Yeah, um thank you. Um I was happy to support um the amendment. Um you know, I think we do have to be realistic about the corner of discretionary money that we have left available uh until the new financial year. Uh and also, actually, we've got an art strategy that talks about supporting local artists. We have some amazing local opera um community groups in our city now, new new ones that have formed. Uh and they 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 are struggling to get funding, you know, and support. So in in my mind, like, yeah, I appreciate the work that New Zealand Opera does, but actually in terms of local priorities, I I would see that we do have other priorities as well that are equally as important. I do share the concern around Canterbury Math. You know, like, when I've seen, and for those of us who have had children, who have been into performances in the town hall or you know, Wolfbrook, like, when you see the kids going into these civic facilities and the pride that they get from being able to enjoy it and be feeling that special ability as a city to celebrate, whether it be maths, whether it be music, whether it be many other things across the 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 four wellbanks. Um I think it is incumbent on us. I mean, if we can pay ratepayer money to subsidize professional sports going into our venues, why can we not support uh kids learning maths and celebrating uh mathematical achievement as well? And one of the concerns I've had with the town hall, and I know we've we've passed some resolutions around to venues at Tatahi in the past, is ensuring that these venues are accessible to our community organisations to use. And, you know, I mean, um I'm predicting that the Canterbury Math application will be declined today. Um I don't support it being declined, but I do hope that we can find a way with venues at Tatahi to work through a greater way to get um these community-type events, especially with our children, you know, to be able to use our facilities and feel that same sense of pride that professional people might might have when they when they get um the ability to perform in these places. So um thank you to the staff. This is always a tricky decision. Um but, you know, I think we've had pretty good advice through our strengthening communities um assessment in the past around New Zealand Opera and around what the what their art strategy is focused on. Um so I'm supporting giving them some, but I do think we've also got other priorities that we need to contribute to as well.
Andre, please. Thank you. Yeah, it's no secret. I support bringing more events here. I I've dealt with so many different um arts organisations who volunteer run, we're talking no salaries, and we don't give them any funding whatsoever. And it's not from not applying, because the funds they're applying through are so heavily contested. The Creative Community Scheme, for example, if I recall correctly, it's something like a hundred and sixty K every six months. And about eighty, seventy, eighty percent of applications miss out, because it's very heavily oversubscribed. And they they might be applying for two thousand, three thousand, really, really small amounts. But for events or um programmes that will reach a huge amount of people, be it young or otherwise. So um I I absolutely support any funding for New Zealand Opera, but when all these organisations are missing out on very small amounts, but there's twenty-five thousand here, I just can't support that amount. We've got to make sure it's fair to all and that we're getting as much accessibility to the arts as possible. So it's just the amount I'm uncomfortable with. Um a- and if all of, like, if all of these different organisations, if they knew that they could come to council and speak to us and then apply through the discretionary response fund, I tell you what, we'll start getting hundreds. Hundreds upon hundreds upon hundreds, and they'll all be worthy, because there's so many good programs out there. So just on the mayor's point about us not giving opera much, that's the case for hundreds of different people out in the arts community at the moment. And then when they see this, that there's twenty-five thousand dollars going to this, but zero dollars to us in the last year because we were told there's no money. Yeah, it's just the amount I'm uncomfortable with. Well, then, Mark?
Um with the Canterbury Math's one, um I mean, they're asking for basically most of that money is to cover venue costs, which are extremely expensive. I don't know why it's that cost. I don't know what length of time it's over. I would like to move an amendment that um venues at Tatahi look um at the cost of venue hire for school groups or for school events to make them accessible to for schoolchildren.
Um could I just remind councillors that we reduced the subsidy for communities? I realise that, but there's some misinformation here.
Carrie. You done?
Yeah.
Yep, you've said.
And you want that to be an amendment as well, so we'd uh
So we'll do this one.
Tyler's amendment to then your amendment.
Yep.
I've already spoken. I don't I don't
Sigil.
Right, we have, Mark is next. Mark?
I've already seconded an amendment. I don't think I can second a second amendment.
And also, just to clarify, because this is a new amendment, uh councillors should be given, who have spoken, should be given the opportunity to speak to this amendment as well if they want to. They don't have to, no, that's right, but they should be given.
At the moment, oh God, God knows who, what amendment Mark's speaking on, but he's speaking.
Uh I'm just really looking to speak that I'm not comfortable um with these resolutions today to be um rejecting funding for, you know, the uh Canterbury Math, which is, you know, quite a fundamental competition for our kids in our city. And then to be looking at funding the New Zealand Opera, um I I find that a bit of an oxymoron that I really can't be too supportive of. Um I understand the value of opera, but, you know, when we're talking about arts in our city, I I sit on the Creative Communities um Arts Group um Committee. And the volume of of funding that this is compared to what was going through that program is exponential. Um so it's almost a backdoor way of getting around the the limits of the um other scheme. Um so I I won't be supporting these today. I'd far sooner see us support our local um schools and kids with their Canterbury Math than look at supporting New Zealand Opera. Um so.
Right, we're just, thank you, Aaron.
Yeah, I, on the opera one, I want to go with the uh original um recommendation. And my reason for that is uh having recently uh met with New Zealand Opera um in them explaining that their losses when they come to Christchurch are pretty much ten to one for them to visit here. And as much as I don't really like opera myself, um what's that? Well, that was not quite opera. To be fair, it was tuneful, but it was not opera. Um Christchurch has a proud history in opera. New Zealand has a very proud history in opera. And the idea of New Zealand Opera coming to Christchurch and inspiring young kids to go on to careers in opera, which many do, I think is a noble one. The bit I want to point out, which is often missed, is opera is overrepresented by Maori and Pacifica. Well overrepresented, nowhere near the population. Uh in fact, uh non-Maori and Pacifica uh kids will struggle to uh make it in opera up against the others, because all our rising stars, when you look at the Toi O Toatahi article, lists the number of all of our, the last five winners of the Song Quest competition were all Pacifica. Um they go on um to have massive careers overseas when you look through this article. Uh i- i- in New York, London, Europe, uh California, there's a number of them that have gone on to have really inspirational careers. Um and and the other side of it is that the Pacifica kids bring a a way bigger personality to the stage um that is something the rest of the world doesn't have. And uh we have a big Pacific base here and and Maori as well. But um they can go on to have big careers, and I think we should support that and inspire those kids that grow up in our neighbourhoods here where they wouldn't see that. They don't get to see the guys from Solomio uh unless they come here and do um do shows and tours and work with those communities. And I I think that, no, not everyone will ever be successful, but to at least inspire a kid to be successful in their life and then try to achieve is something we can do. So I think um we should be supportive of the staff recommendation. And as far as the Canterbury Math kids go, why can't we pimp them out to do a bit of paperwork to pay for the funds? Uh they're all gonna be accountants like Sam one day, so.
They could help each team.
Um. Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Aaron. Sure, Sarah?
Thanks. Um given the amendment, um uh asking venues at Tatahi to review and report back to council on their venue costs, school events, and the ongoing concern around the table about um uh schoolkids and the the ability for us to um potentially help with Canterbury Maths, I'd like to move an additional amendment, which is for twelve thousand three hundred and fifty dollars to Canterbury Math, being the other half of the twenty-five thousand dollars. Um so if we halved the, um if we just did that portion for um the New Zealand Opera for kids at school, then we do the other portion for maths um outside of school. Um so twelve thousand three hundred and fifty um from the discretionary response fund towards Canterbury Math. And Mark is happy to second it. So it would have to be
And then wins do you want to foreshadow that one?
I will, I will put it anyway. I will put it anyway. So even if his fails, I think we we get to choose whether we give twelve thousand dollars to Canterbury.
Did did I make the fatal mistake of saying we were gonna get out of here early today?
Mark?
We probably paid for it the amount of time we've been talking for it. Right.
We don't get paid on an hourly rate, so.
Mark?
Certainly happy to support that amendment from uh councillor Templeton, um and uh makes a lot more palatable.
Okay, Pauline?
Thank you. Um I would be supporting the full amount for the New Zealand Opera, and I congratulate councillor Keown on an excellent debate there. And I think it's really poignant to mention Pacifica and Maori, and boy, they've got lungs. Um so, um but I would also like to move an amendment. I know, and I really would like to you to consider this, because the amendment that councillor Templeton's put up, we don't, I don't have enough information to support that. I don't know if they would be able to continue with half the fund. Um and also, uh we don't know if they would be able to deliver that at all. Uh we don't know if venues at Tatahi will be able to contribute anything. I would like, my amendment would be to um to lay the um Canterbury Math on the table and revisit that when we have the information and the answers to our questions about that.
Lord.
Like a second up?
Aaron's second again.
Yeah, and I think it could have been brought up in inform.
This is a big day. Um right, so we've got that one.
Does that mean my amendment goes first because it came in last?
Yeah. Okay, so, well, has anybody else got any amendments? But, yeah. Are you, Tim, are you talking about something? Continue away, sir. Righto, we're gonna have five minutes.
I'm sorry.
Hey, we are back. Right, before I go any further, uh is it, got all these three up here? Is there anyone that wants to debate on anything that hasn't debated on an issue? It's going to be very confusing because they're all over the village. Um, does anyone want to say anything about?
Can I clarify?
Yes.
Am I allowed to debate with these new ones? Because I've been shut down twice, so I'm just wondering, where do I stand?
That's exactly what the mayor said. You can, you can talk, you can add debate on anything that you, was new since your last debate that you didn't have the opportunity to speak to.
If there's a new one, like say, say for example Pauline's last amendment, if you wanted to debate on that, you could, because you haven't done anything.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So is everyone happy with the reign of confusion that we've got here at the moment? Because I'm gonna do the amendments as they came in, okay? You got, you got, um, debate items, Celeste?
Tim.
And then Tim?
And.
Where you go, mate?
This is really just a point of clarification, but I did circulate an email which, me a culprit, I did receive and I just wanted to say that publicly because I did ask a question, um, which has a list of schools, so hopefully everyone's got that. Um, which has actually meant that I've been persuaded to support this, um, but I would like to see a bit of a follow-up on, uh, how that's been, um, working with some of the schools, especially the schools that might have limited access. I very much was sort of back and forth on this one because I think that councillor Moore made some really good comments, as did councillor, many other councillors, um, but, you know, there is a lot of value to the creative sector and I think this has been a recommendation from staff and I trust them on this, so, and also the singing was very persuasive as well, so thank you.
Okay, yeah, very much. Tim?
Um, thank you. Just a couple of quick things. First of all, we as a council reduced the V O, venues Otatahi's community subsidy. We chose to do that. Venues Otatahi well and truly exceed our K P I for subsidizing communities. So when we're going to talk about venues Otatahi in the negative, in a sense, maybe we should look at why we reduced it. Because there's no free ride here and if we're so concerned, maybe as a council, we should talk amongst ourselves or whatever and look at reinstating that, but there is no free ride anywhere on this, okay? The second one is, if I'm correct, um, I don't think we've ever, and this is kind of irrelevant, but just to get effects right, while we're just talking around the table, I don't think as a council, we've ever funded Cantamath. Doesn't mean we shouldn't or can't, but I'm just saying, let's get our ducks in a row here, if we're going to be talking in public. Thank you.
Okay, uh, we have Mark.
Thank you. This is quite an evolving, um, situation and debate here. Uh, I'd like to thank Celeste for providing that information of the schools. Um, that certainly puts things in a fairly new light in the fact that it is actually targeting well into some of the lower decile schools. And, um, I think that's looking at the idea of potentially swinging me to look towards supporting the opera in some way. Um, don't know if I'd support to the full, but certainly, um, if we can find a compromise here between Cantamath and the opera, I think I could, could look at supporting it.
Right, no more debate. Uh, Cal?
I promise not to sing.
Good.
Um, yeah, um, thanks councillor Donovan for circulating that list of schools. Um, you know, I, I think, um, New Zealand Opera's involvement in schools and coming to, uh, to Christchurch to foster that, uh, opportunity and, and give young people a vision about what they could achieve is, uh, is a really fantastic idea. And, um, and I think it's a great point that, uh, that, um, um, what's his name? Aaron. Councillor Keown, um, brought up about the, um, the interest of Pacific Islanders and, um, and, uh, the success that they've had, uh, on the world stage with opera. And I think if we can contribute in any way to inspiring, um, the young people of our city, the young Pacifica, et cetera, in our city to, uh, take up opera, then I think that's a wonderful thing. I would just make the point about Ca- Cantamath that, um, it's easily run in schools. Uh, my own son participated back in the day and it was, uh, done at a local high school. Uh, maths is something that is taught every day in every school, um, so, you know, I'm willing to support that, but particularly the opera, so, thanks.
Okay, Andre.
Um, yeah, just, I'm very heartened to hear so much enthusiasm for supporting local arts programs. So I'm keen to find out if this enthusiasm applies to all forms of arts. I look forward to seeing in the annual plan.
Okay. Right, so Mary, I'll do the first one, isn't it? It's that one. Okay, so we have a mover and second, the one that's in yellow up behind me. We have a mover and second that which lowers the grant for, to New Zealand Opera from what it was, I can't see it, to twelve and a half, just twelve six. So we have a mover and second of that. So all those in favor of that amendment going forward, say aye.
Aye.
Against? No. So that is lost. Okay, now we'll move to the next one. We, we, that one there, request that venues Otatahi review and report back to council on their venue costs for school events.
Um, just, we, Kelly and I can't vote on this.
Okay, is that, have I got that right? Okay, we have a mover and se- we have a mover and second for that. So all of the people that want that to go forward, please say aye. Against? No. Yeah, probably easiest.
Somebody's called for, somebody's called for division.
Got to do it. Okay. Right.
Okay, fantastic. Um, everyone who was against the amendment six, can you please raise your hands? Keep them high. Councillor Moore, McClellan, the mayor, McDonald. Um, anyone else against? Yes. So our councillors Moore, McClellan, the mayor and councillor McDonald against.
Okay, so that's in, is that right? Okay, and the last one? Oh, second to last one. Now, here we are.
Sorry, can we just get process question?
Yes.
The one to defer, can, shouldn't that be done first? Because that might change our mind depending on like what happens with that one.
You had it a foreshadow, didn't you?
So what, what, sorry, sorry, what I've got at the moment, at the moment, the opera, at the moment, gets, well, we haven't voted on it yet, gets the full amount of money.
Yes.
Uh, yeah, 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 yeah. And this will add an extra twelve grand from somewhere else, out of the bucket, to Cantamath.
So, uh, we thought that Pauline's was a, uh, foreshadowed, but it's not, it's an amendment. So we should put her amendment first around deferring Cantamath.
Uh, like, like Yanni said, yeah. Okay, so we do seven.
But you haven't got a second yet, Deputy Mayor.
Yep, uh, Aaron. Right, so we do seven.
So I defer it first and if that loses, we'll, uh, move to deciding whether to fund it.
Okay, so. I'm pleased we didn't take this long with the water one. Right, here we are. The yellow one, defuse Cantamath until the twenty first of May in order to allow time to bring back more information. All those in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Against? That is carried. Right, so that means the one above it vanishes, does it? Okay. There we go, goodbye. Right, so now we're up the top.
So we need to put the deferral one in there.
Mm-hmm. Right.
So we've put in the.
Yeah, so it's, there it is, yeah, that's the, um, number four is the one that's in different writing, different font. Right, so is it, we're all happy with that, what we've got there?
For the substantive.
Yeah, so we're now, there's a mover and second for what you now see on the screen. All of those in favor of that, please say aye. Aye. Against? Okay, being called for.
Yes, and just to clarify, it's not up on screen yet, but there's additional one about requesting information is also in here.
Okay. Division.
All right, uh, this is a division on substantive motion, uh, as you see on screen currently. Councillor Keown.
Please.
Yes. Councillor McClellan.
Come on.
Ye- yes, yeah.
Councillor McDonald.
Yes, if it gets it over with, yeah.
Councillor Huntstock.
Yes.
Councillor Moore.
No, let's debate it further.
Councillor Scandret.
Yes.
Councillor Harrison Hunt.
Right.
It wasn't, no.
Right.
Councillor Coker.
Yes.
Councillor Peters.
Aye.
The mayor.
Yes, yes.
Councillor Templeton.
Aye.
Councillor Farber.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Carter.
Aye.
Councillor Fields.
Yep.
Councillor Johansson. Councillor Donovan. And councillor Goff.
All good, we're looking sharp.
And we will put a six to be noted about the four that voted against, number six.
Yes, and as well as.
Okay, that's carried. Yeah, thank you, that's carried. Right, we're now up to, because we will, we're going to stop at one o'clock anyway. Um, so if anyone, it'd only be the P X after one o'clock from you, after lunch.
And one of those reports, we've got.
Yeah, okay, so we've got, uh, Josh back again. Um, Environmental Partnership Fund, now this is just terms of reference, isn't it?
Correct, and it has been, uh, workshopped with the council to, to develop it as well.
And Celeste's happy to move it and Pauline's happy to second it. If we take it as being read, is there any questions of Josh? No, any debate on this?
Can I just thank staff for putting this together? It, it, it's really good. And the fact that it's, some of it's, um, contested and some of it is, is up to staff delegation and using the parks team is fantastic. So this fund at seven hundred thousand for the next two years, then a million, um, is, um, what we get out of that using volunteers and partners is a multiplying effect on that money. It's a really healthy investment, um, and it's, has a massive return for our city and Banks Peninsula. So I can't wait to see this get cracking, so thank you. So short and sweet, Mary, thank you.
Well done, you. No, any other, um, Celeste?
Uh, yeah, also thanks to staff for their work on this. I think it's a really great outcome for the long-term plan. And I'd also like to acknowledge councillor Co- um, Carter for leading a lot of this and, um, councillor Coker, so I'm mixing those up there, and some others, uh, Tyron and others who've worked on this. I think it's a really important, um, investment for the city that will yield, as councillor Carter's mentioned, a huge amount of benefits for the city. And I also think that the terms of reference are really clever in that we are making sure that the people that know where this investment go have, um, the ability to kind of delegate that funding. Um, and I look forward to seeing, um, hearing more about this as it, um, comes into play.
It's brilliant. So we've done all that, I'll put the, we've got a mover and second, I'll put all that. Um, those in favor, aye, against, brilliant, that's carried. Number seventeen, Shaun. Pauline wanted division.
Good afternoon, mayor and councillors. Uh, we'll take the report as read, but just a, a couple of highlights that we'd like to, uh, bring out. Uh, on the governance side first of all, uh, we'd just like to reflect that all statutory and, uh, most of the level of service targets are on track to be met. Uh, the only, uh, level of service and governance that won't be met this term relates to the number of meetings supported over the term, uh, or over the year, I should say. Uh, that's not a reflection of staff not supporting meetings, it's a reflection of a reduction in, in meeting numbers overall. Uh, the level of service for that will be adjusted accordingly, uh, next year. Um, the organisation's also managed to work through a large backlog of the open actions from elected member meetings. Uh, in the last quarter, around, uh, or just over five hundred were, were closed off by staff. Um, and just a final note from me, I'll be back on the nineteenth to brief you on an update to do with, uh, transparency in the voting tool as per the re- resolution from the draft annual plan back in February. I'll hand over to Shaun now.
Thank you, Matt. Um, again, just, just quickly, just to give you sort of an overview of some of the current trends. Um, we are experiencing still a, a consistently high number of requests across the organisation. Um, we've already hit last full year's, um, legoima numbers in the first three quarters of this year. So we're running at unprecedented numbers there, um, and also two elected member queries, uh, were now passed, um, where we were for the whole year last year. So we are experiencing a, a heavy number of, um, questions which continue to grow by all accounts. Um, so we're mindful of the effect on the organisation and staff resourcing. Um, we're looking at increasing, um, and perfecting processes to make it as efficient as we possibly can. And also to, um, increasing sort of better, better levels of communication to set better expectations across, um, all requests as well. So this is sort of the key areas we're looking at.
Done, you're all happy. Right, Tyler?
Kyurigas. Uh, my quick questions around current staff capacity. In your view, uh, you guys can manage the workload at the moment, would there be a point where you won't be able to manage the workload in terms of, uh, elected members' questions and the public's questions and legomis?
Um, well, in short, yes. Um, you know, when I started in this role coming up ten years ago, we used to do about four hundred and fifty legomis a year. Um, this year we're probably going to spike it about sixteen hundred, which is sort of Auckland numbers. Um, and that's not just from our perspective, because of most of the, most of the requests we deal with, we administer, um, and we deal with it to certain levels. I mean, our team spends a lot of hours, um, on requests, but we also rely heavily on the big operational units who are dealing with most of the requests. Um, to put a lot of the information together as the subject matter, subject matter experts. So it's from us from a gatekeeper perspective, but it's also within the organisation that it's, um, that it's felt as well.
Why do you think the community, I'm saying this the nicest way possible. Why do you think the community are so much more engaged, um, in terms of questions rather than last year and the year before?
I think information's key. Um, there's a greater, greater awareness and knowledge in the community about getting information and, and quality information. And so that's got a knock-on effect across everyone. I mean, you probably would have felt that yourself, just the number of people asking you questions. Um, so I think it's just, it's just a development in the world we live in and not just us, but across the, the public sector.
Okay, it's good to know. Thanks so much.
No problem.
Sarah?
Um, how do we treat requests that come in where you don't really have a real person's name? Because I'm aware that there's some of that kind of happens. You just treat it as if it was a real person anyway?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, I mean, basically there's no requirement, um, for a name under the legoma. Like, we will, we will respond as best we can, um, make an informed decision. If it's public information, then we'd release it to anyone anyway. We take that, that approach. Um, if it's more personal information or sensitive, we might just try and, um, have a more curated approach to it, balancing, balancing the act and the grounds that we need to.
Yeah, and excluding the media who will, you know, request information, you know, based on, um, things they hear here. Are there individuals within the community who are doing, uh, you know, a significant number?
Um, yes, there are certain individuals, um, interested in various topics, um, it's fair to say. Um, some of those are personal, um, based on their own sort of sphere. Um, others more sort of influenced, um, by greater, greater sort of, um, issues such as transport in general and the like. So quite motivated requests is there.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other, oh, sorry, yes, Sarah, that's right.
Um, is, so obviously there's been a ramp-up of certain sort of people that are putting in lots of requests. That's how these things come about. Is that list allowed to be published? Could I legoma that?
Well, you can. It could be information we hold, so it is discoverable. However, we do need to be careful of privacy primarily there. A lot of people will request issues specific to them. It could be about their own property, it could be about a neighbouring property. So we do need to be careful to treat everything on a case-by-case basis and ensure privacy, um, is met.
Okay, then the other one is on a point that Sarah raised, which I didn't know, that, and, and non-person. Because one of the problems on, online is th- there's people, well, they've got a name and a profile picture of a cat or whatever. You don't know if they're real or not, because they've got no friends in New Zealand, they've got friends in Zimbabwe or something, and they, so do they exist? Probably not, but they're allowed to legoma or kind of any identity can legoma, why?
Under the legoma, there's no restriction, so there's not even a restriction within New Zealand. I mean, people from overseas could technically put in information requests as well. Um, we, we act in good faith and assume that they are real people, um, and would respond as if they were.
Okay, um, I don't know if we can write to the appropriate ministers and just ask them to review that. Because if it's, if, if it's burning holes in councils and government departments, people just asking just for dumb stuff, uh, and it's burning up our system, other government departments will be the same, uh, no doubt. Um, uh, some of it will be used, uh, to try and take down organisations or people. If you're going to do that, at least put your name to it. Say, hi, I'm Aaron Keown and I'm asking for this information about Sam McDonald. And it's me again, I'm asking about Sam, it's me again, but you should have to put your name to it, just like you should have to put your name to comments in the paper. Yeah.
I'm just, just to add to that, it's, it's, it's not many, it, it's not many examples of requests we'd find that would question the authenticity of the requister. The vast majority would be actual people.
Actual, real people. Right, okay. I just think it could become an alarming trend and it can become dangerous as well, I think, so.
Okay, thanks. Sure, you, you do, no, Shaun, you do notice motions as well, don't you, your department?
Uh, no, no, that's more governance. Um, we receive them, but certainly, um, no, it's more the, um, governance team that deal with those primarily, administer them.
All right, because I know that we got asked a question the other day about why we've got such a larger percentage of them than seems to be everyone else. Um, and, you know, and everyone's allowed to put them in, I've got no problem with that. Um, but it seems to be that, that some people in any county, not picking anyone in particular, think that, oh, if I do a notice motion, we'll get it risen to the top of the, top of the tree quicker and all that sort of thing. But just, I was just checking on some the other day and we've had one in since Christmas time that has taken eighty hours for one notice motion for staff working on it. Now, that's two weeks of that staff's life to working on a notice motion. So we've just got to be, we're, you know, we're as bad as the people doing the legoma stuff, that's what I'm trying to get to.
Sure, well, I mean, I, I'm not personally involved in, in a lot of the notice of motion, but to flip it to the legoma side, there are certain requests that, I mean, I've worked on requests that have taken hundreds of hours to complete.
How, how many hours, sorry?
Hundreds of hours. I mean, it, it just depends, most of them are nowhere near that, but there are certain ones that will take ten, twenty, thirty hours of staff time.
Yep, that's good. Okay, Mel?
Would it be possible when the information goes back out to whoever's requested it to actually say, this has taken, um, so many hours and cost blah, blah, blah? People may think twice.
We, we could, but if, if we, if we triage it well at the front end and actually get it scoped well, we can go back to them at the start and say, this is going to take twenty hours to complete, um, so a lot of staff time. Can you actually refine what you want? And we do try that as, as much as we can.
But we, sorry, we don't go to the point where we say, right, you get five hours, well, ten hours free and then the rest of it we charge you for? And we wouldn't get the money off them anyway.
Yeah, well, well, we do have a charging policy, um, that we really invoke, we try and work with them, try and understand what they want, give them more of a refined quality answer instead of five hundred emails, which doesn't usually help anyone to actually give them the key information they need.
Okay, that's good, right, moving right along. Aaron, and then we'll.
Um, I would like us to get some information back, ironically, um, on, uh, the charging policy. Uh, because the building department charger, you get an upfront meeting for an hour or whatever. So you've got a limit on how much you can get free off the council and information costs the ratepayer money. And I think we should be looking at our charging policy. Yeah, it's all great, I'm happy that the information gets given out. But if some people are asking again and again and again and taking up hundreds of hours, I think there's a real expectation from the ratepayer. Unless they've been wronged, if they've got a case where they've been wronged, that's different, so an exemption could be made. But beyond that, I, I think, yeah, once you've gone beyond your hour in a year, that's it, you start paying. It's unfair on the other ratepayers because it costs a lot of money and it costs a lot of staff time. And I think sometimes a conversation with an elected member or a senior staff member could get them to where they want to go a lot quicker than this malarkey that's now four hundred percent higher than it was several years ago.
Okay, now the really last one, Sarah.
I, if we're going to ask some information, I think we should work out whether we do want to ask the information. Because if it's only a limited number of people doing that, I'd be really, really reluctant. And I know that some of them, some of the requests are really frustrating and people don't sometimes like the answer they get and, and then ask again. But I'd be really reluctant when there are lots of low-income people then who would have their access to information about things that have, happen in the council, denied basically by a, by a cost barrier when, when others can afford it. And I just, I just think it's a fundamental principle, um, that shouldn't be a barrier to access for information, which is different to, like, if you're building somewhere and you're getting that service. So that would be my pushback on staff spending time getting you that information.
Okay, right. Moving, moving right along. It, great, no more question, no, any, any debate on this? Yep, Sarah and Pauline, please. Yanni, question, do, your debate or question?
Just very quickly, I, I just wanted to acknowledge the work that staff are doing in this space, acknowledging that it does take time. But, you know, one of the really, uh, significant things that we've done is just to have a, a really good focus on increased transparency. And I do wonder if there's a link between, um, provide, doing more things and open and, um, people wanting more information, which is, and ultimately, in my view, a good thing. So I just want to acknowledge and give credit to the team for the extraordinary amount of work they've done around, um, opening up as much information as possible to the public, recognising the challenges that that brings. But I do think, um, when you look at the statistics in here, you can see that we are making a really good, a really good progress on being as open as possible with our community and I think that's for the better.
Okay, so we've got a mover and second, I'll put that, all those in favor, against, thanks, that's carried, brilliant. Stephen, sitting at the back there, mind your own business all this time. Uh, number eighteen, building consent unit update. Now, these updates are because we got busy two, three weeks ago and we had to put you off, I'm sorry. So, uh, welcome back.
Thank you. Um, so, um, thank you, I'll take the report as read, but just will highlight a couple of quick things. Um, just that, uh, consents are approximately ten percent higher than, um, than previous year still, so remaining reasonably high. Um, levels of service are generally being met, um, the three that are not are zero in on those targets. So, um, each month, month on month, um, the improvements are there and we're, um, zero. So um each month, month on month, um the improvements are there and we're um zero in on those targets. Um and I guess probably the other thing, I just did a summary of um some of the government reform in the in the industry at the moment, so there's a bit going on in that space, but I've just got a bit of a summary on there as well, so. Quick overview of the report.
Very good that you've got all this extra work and how um some other parts of the country are going downwards and we're holding around or going upwards, so um it's good. Who would like to, Yanni, question?
Can I just check on the erosion and sediment control? Um and thank you for the work that you're doing in that space. It is um good that we're doing more inspections, but the inspection rate, failure percentage of twenty percent is still one in five. I find quite concerning. I just wondered though, do we know what the benchmark is across other councils or other inspections?
No, no, I guess the only thing I'd add to that is that it's um, oh, it's a good thing that we're picking it up. Um so um and we only get involved from uh from where there is a consent and where there's a high risk site. Um so that's what the figures are based on. But um yeah, the 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 figures, if you look at them, might seem a little bit high, but um that means that the 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 issues are being picked up, I suppose, out there, so, yeah.
Is, so is there anything further that we could do to try and reduce the amount of failure? Uh it's trying to reduce the failure rate? I mean, I'm just mindful of watching with the rain, the, you know, the sediment going into the rivers.
Yeah, so so we we do the inspection um effectively before they start work, so we we are um so for that inspection type, we are, we're arriving on site as it's starting the work, so we are correcting um things before they go wrong. So it's not saying that there necessarily is an issue with um sediment being taken off the site. It's just that the sediment control at the start is is probably is an issue, so therefore it's corrected, so it's a, it's a positive.
And then, and then just, um the ob- obviously, there was a um, there was a fire yesterday or the day before. One, two, three, Warrington Street. I wasn't sure if that was a residential um facility for multiple people. But um I'm just wondering where we've got to with, obviously, what happened at Loafas Lodge in Wellington. We were doing work around making sure we were assessing um those types of facilities for for risk and for fire. Is that part of this or is that a separate unit?
Yeah, so we do the B W O F inspections. Um and um so we 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 inspect high risk, medium risk and low risk. Um and then has have an overall target of twenty percent of housing stock each year, which we're on target to meet this year.
Okay.
Um.
Are we, uh maybe not today, because I know people, we've got other questions and other things, but are we able to just get an update on what's been happening in that space around, particularly around the ones similar to, you know, the lodging or the?
Yep.
I don't know what exactly you call them, but.
Yeah, so the the boarding houses, so.
Yeah.
Um there was an update in the previous report, I think. Um and basically, we've only had a couple of um two or three, I can't remember exactly, uh buildings in crisis that were similar to that type of type of building. And um we worked with um M B team, ensured that they were um up to the appropriate standard, so.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Thanks, Jan. Right, and lastly, Mel.
With the earthquake prone buildings, they had an extension, didn't they? So they they've got till twenty twenty eight to deal with the issues. It would be good in here to report. Um just include the information for next time, but also I was just wondering if we know how many are on track to meet our own what. Or or do we not really know?
Yeah, I guess, would you like a like a summary of when they're, the dates they do, or how many for each year or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could include that in.
Yeah, that'd be interesting. Thanks.
Yeah.
All right, Sarah, please.
Uh thanks so much. Um two quick things, the um the granting of building consents. We've got Jan, February, both meeting March, just down by one percent. But the year-to-date is much lower than those. Have we done something that improves that over the year so far? Um and what are we doing to get it back up so that we're meeting the ninety five percent by the end of the year?
So so they're they're the um, the the monthly ones are the totals for the for the month.
Yeah, yeah, that's right.
This year-to-date, so.
The other ones must have been much lower last year.
Yeah, and and we've we've come from, um I think I might have said in the commentary, I was looking. Yeah, so back in August twenty twenty three, we're down around fifty six percent. So we've graduated, we've turned, done a number of changes to our processes and training and um all those, we're starting to see the the benefits of those. And each month, we're, month on month, we're we're improving.
Yeah.
Um and which has got us up to the ninety percent we are now, and we're sort of zeroing in on that target. So there's that ongoing improvement each month as it is.
So do we think that we're going to make it by the end of the year or probably not, since it's still orange in May in May?
It's pretty close, but maybe might won't quite make it, I think.
Okay, um and so what are we gonna do for next time?
Well, we're currently seeing, if if we look at, say, residential consents, um the last couple of months, we've been seeing about that ninety nine, a hundred percent. For the residential consensus, that's the vast majority of our consents. Um so, and then the commercial we're sitting on about um in the nineties as well, so we just um try, we, I guess we we use a little bit of um I guess carefully managed overtime to try and ensure that we do what we need to, because it it's it's not a, obviously, it's not a straight line of applications.
That's it.
Yeah, so you get peaks and troughs with that.
Yeah, yeah. Um are we able to split those out?
The residential and commercial.
Yeah.
Yes.
Can we, if we could do that in the next report, that would be useful. Um the other thing that's come up quite a lot in the last couple of weeks is um discussion around uh the availability of onsite car parking now that there's no parking minimums. And I asked a while back and I got a a good answer through that that said that there'd been a study done last year and that actually, on average, across the city, new developments are, you know, residential ones are, on average, having one car park on site. Her, is that something, is that data we're just kind of just slowly, just kind of quietly collecting in the background? So that we can assess how things are going?
Um I'm not sure if we've got that data, but obviously we've provided previously.
Yeah, yeah, because I, yeah, I've I've got the response, um just uh last month. Yeah, yeah, just, yeah, about, yeah, about three weeks ago. Um and it was just, yeah, it was a one-off, one-off assessment done. As opposed to just sort of tracking things. It's an interesting data about what we're consenting over time.
Okay.
Would just be useful just to be tracking in the back, not reported.
Yeah.
But those kind of things make a difference to when we're doing planning for um the availability of um public amenities and those kind of things. So, yeah, it it's useful to know what's happening in that space, yeah.
And very lastly, Mark.
Thank you. Um I've heard something interesting recently regarding um building consents being turned back to um applicants on the fact that they've planned to include car parking on site. Um and then been asked to potentially um resubmit without car parking. Is that anything that we'd be doing as a council to actively discourage car parking being provided?
Don't think we'd be doing that through the building consenting.
Right.
Yeah.
Because that that would be disturbing if there was any any substance in that.
Yeah, I'm not sure that's through the building consenting.
Excellent. Good work, thank you. Right, we've got a mover and seconder, so I'll put that motion, oh, debate, anyone, sorry, no. Put the, put that motion, all those in favour, I, against, thank you, that's carried, brilliant. There's an hour up to number nineteen, and we'll have this one, and we'll have breakfast for lunch. So Alec, please, you're very patiently sitting there.
Okay, um yeah, I'll take the report as read. Um I think uh the only change since the report was written is we have had a couple of government um consultations released, so one is to do with um agriplastics through the Agrocovery Foundation, so that'll affect more rural environments than maybe the city environment. Um and that's on a stewardship scheme that's been introduced to to make it mandatory, so it'll it'll apply across the whole country. It's actually been running for about eighteen years, but it's a voluntary scheme at the moment, so that'll deal with sort of farm waste. And the second one that's come out recently is they're uh reviewing the Waste Minimization Act and the Litter Act, and they're making some um changes there. And effectively, in summary, for the Waste Minimization Act, they're looking to introduce the extended producer responsibility concept, so they just want to get the legislative framework in place, so they can then uh enable more schemes as they come online. Um they're changing the waste disposal levy, and not the allocation amount that we get as council, but how it's subdivided. So they're introducing a flat fee, which means that smaller councils will get a more guaranteed fixed amount. So they, if they were hiring staff, for example, they know that that's a guaranteed income over the period. The levy will continue to escalate and go up, so we will, we will just adjust our budgets as and when the government signals those amounts. And the Litter Act, I guess the main thing there is they're um dropping the term illegal dumping and calling it mismanaged waste. And they're putting through a number of proposals as to how councils can strengthen their compliance and sort of general enforcement response to that. But as far as the report goes, it's pretty much business as usual. There's nothing untoward that's popped up, evidence on trend and all the contracts are performing um within expectations.
Yeah, Mark's got a question, yeah. Pauline's move, yeah.
Also have you a second when it comes to it?
And Mark has a second.
Just wondered, Alec, if it's worth giving us around the table and also those in TV land a quick update on where things are at regards to the um organics processing facility.
Yep, um so just to recap, the organics processing application went in last July. Uh there were some delays at E C A N, um that extended the timeframe, so effectively the project now is six months later than what we initially anticipated. And the further caveat there is it's the the application process still to be determined. So they made the application um limited notification, um were advised that the hearings for that are in June. Uh I think it's the ninth and tenth or the tenth and eleventh. So obviously, the commissioner will hear those um responses from the limited parties and whoever else contributes, and then they'll go away and deliberate and make their decisions. So probably by end of June, um early July, the the applicant EcoGas will know where they stand. And then they'll give us a projected um a change to the the project timeline. That's assuming, obviously, that it does go through and they do get consent. But that's, that's in the hands of the regulators at the moment. So I mean, that's positive news because the process is progressing. Um and we should know by July where we stand, and then we'll be able to give a more accurate forecast as to when the new facility will um open and when we'll do the transition from Bromley to Hornby.
So so sorry, just some on right track, uh with the Tower Wind and everything going with us, there should be a consent in someone's hand end of July-ish.
Yeah, if if the if the outcome of the process is successful, then yeah, that's the sort of timeframe, yeah. Yeah, and we just, the only reservation we've got is what are the conditions that go with that consent, and do we need to adjust a contract framework or or the 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 project timeframe in response to that?
Uh one question from me, sometime, sometimes, and it hasn't happened for a long time. Uh with the commodity price going down at Eco Central, sometimes we've had to uh top them up because it it's been so poor. How are we looking at the moment? Is it holding its own or are we looking all right or what?
Yeah, there's a couple of, so we've got a different mechanism now from what you experienced before. There's a quarterly update from Eco um Central. And that obviously adjusts the the base price, uh the processing fee based on the commodity values. So at the moment, the the likes of aluminium is is ascending and is rising, but it's the smaller volume and fibre is going down. Um the the effect of the tariffs will kick in eventually if they are held in place. Um so it's not so much for the movement of the recycling, it's the the supply and demand knock-on effect that it'll create within the manufacturing and and sort of retail market. So um the O G paper mill closed last year, so that half a million tonnes got put on the market. And we've had the market's reaction to that, so that price has gone down slightly in response to that. But obviously, if 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 demand slows and production drops, then the supply of the recycling is still the same, so the price for that then drops because there's more available, so. But at the moment, we're we're okay, we're fine. The movements aren't significant, and our budget is actually still based on a much worse case than we're currently experiencing, so there there's no budget impact at the moment.
Now, that's good, yes, Mark, please. Oh, and then Yanni.
Yep, sorry, I just wanted to carry on that EcoGas um update. Um I gather EcoGas um are continuing in the background with design and um I think it's a technical advisory group being used as well.
Yeah, their their project plan hasn't really stopped because of the the situation with the consent. They're still carrying on with their own procurement process, so at the moment, they've um they've looked at the civils, that's evidence basically been awarded a contingent on the consent being issued. Um they've got through the um equipment design, so that that's the the dual lines, the A D, the whole system is is all now in play, uh and they've got a couple of suppliers, technical suppliers that will help them with that. Um and then the other, the other aspects, um you know, the sort of hazardous profile of the site and and that whole risk assessment, et cetera. All that works in plan, so, yeah, they haven't really stopped simply because the consent is um running behind the initial schedule, yeah.
Yep, very good. And then thinking about the existing O P P site, Adam Bromley. Um are we talking with parties such as like E C A N um around the idea of potential future use for it? Or is it just purely community?
Um we we've initiated that conversation. Um it's not not a regulatory matter yet. We need to determine what we want the site to become. So we met with the local boards and had the initial discussion with them. We've gone through what I would call an internal process. That'll be concluded probably in the next few weeks, probably by the end of the month. So that's where we reach out to other council departments and say, look, some are all over the site, it's coming up for potential use. Do you have a use for it as a department? Um so we're getting those responses back, and then we'll come back to council, to the L T and see this is where we've landed. Um and then um once we've, we're clear on what is and isn't available, um then we would go back to the community and 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 open up for them to give us their thoughts on what the the future of the site could be.
Yep, one of the thoughts that I think councillor um Johansson was mentioning, uh was potentially E C A N with bus um depot or something like that, so just understand whether that's.
Some things to look at in the future, yeah, yeah. Um Y Yanni, then Pauline, and then lunch. Got it, got it, everyone?
Yeah, thanks. Um I'm just, I'm just looking at our website, and then I'm looking at the EcoGas website and the E C A N website. There's no clear timeframe for the new organics plant that I can see. And I'm just wondering, is is there a way we can put the the key milestones um in a simple, easy to understand way that the community can see where things are at and what progress is being made? Because I'm just, like, I appreciate we're in the consenting stage, but you've also talked about other things being done. Um and we do, I mean, like, we do have the, um obviously, we have the um the liaison group update. Um but I don't think we've had one recently. I'm not sure if you're aware, but E C A N have made a, set a date for the consent, the eleventh of June, hearing. So is there any way we can just get a really easy to understand timeframe of the key milestones and see how it works progressively? Yeah.
Yes, we can look at that, and we can update it, yeah. I mean, obviously, we'll get the revised programme once the consent process has completed. But we can look at the information that's on the website just now and then adjust it to reflect what we currently know.
Yeah, I think I think that'd be really useful. And then um do we know who the commissioners are? Have we been advised?
No, it's, we're miles away from it.
Hello, they've appointed, they appointed the commissioners on the thirtieth of April.
Does it matter?
Oh, well.
Not Alec's department.
Just a final question from me. Around that whole glass recycling, where where have we got to with that? Are we getting?
With glass recycling?
Yeah, like the, remember we're doing the Eco Drop, it's got the special trial, and I think it's going really well.
Yeah.
But is there another report back to us on options for glass recycling or?
You'll, you'll see that come through, and there'll be a procurement plan coming to you in the next couple of months for the future Waste Management Minimization Services contracts, and that'll include um the glass out option in that, yeah.
Thank you, and Pauline, please.
About one minute. So um see, um curbside collection, the contamination seems to be increasing in the um rejected uh trucks. So I'm just wondering, have you thought about bringing back the um Gold Star program? Because that really had a positive impact on reducing that contamination. We got right down to what, limit, I don't know, two percent or something really low. So are you concerned that it's increasing?
No, no, I think um there there are um week on week variations, but generally, we're at the bottom of the the curve for contamination. Um if you go back um a couple of years, we were having hundreds of loads, um you know, uh currencies a week. And now we're down to single figures. Um the audit um program, we we haven't discontinued that, we've kept that going. We're actually in discussion with the contractor about how we can push that and actually um um put more resources into that, but that's still working. We're still withdrawing bins if people ultimately break the three-strike rule, the Gold Star system, et cetera, is still all in place, so. No, I mean, I think it, on the scale of the system and the amount of lifts we do each week, there is an attrition rate. There'll always be rejected loads. The key is that we have a facility that actually checks the loads as they come in, rather than us just accepting them. And then that would slowly, over time, start to increase.
Maybe the way you've presented that data looks worse than it is. It would be quite good to have that in a graph or something. I think we used to have that on page two fifty nine, when you've got your um tonnes of rejected loads of greater than ten percent contamination. And when you've got in March, the number's forty six, in October it was six, but you're saying forty six is still loads. But you're saying 46 are still loads. So we need to have some sort of a, a way to actually see that there is.
There's a couple of sources of contamination. There's loads that get rejected because they've been visually checked and they don't pass the 10% visual check. But then when the waste actually goes through the sorting process, there's an amount of residual waste that comes out of that.
Yeah, that's the table underneath.
Yep. But that might not necessarily break the 10% threshold to reject the load. So there'll always be some non-conforming material in the material, rubbish in the material flow.
Thank you.
Right, thanks, Alec. That's great. So we've got to move in a second. So no debate. I'll throw that out there. All those in favour? Aye. Against? Thanks. That's carried. So very good. And we'll be here at 2:00.
Welcome, welcome back everyone. We are now up to item twenty, the youth portfolio lead report. And I'd like to ask Tyler to present it, please.
Cool. There's a presentation on there. Yeah, yeah. Sweet. You're looking good. So firstly, I just wanna thank Danielle Endicott and the community services team for putting my thoughts into writing. Danielle's done a lot of work in this space where wherever I'm not there, she's gonna be there. So I just wanted to give a shout out to her first. Next slide. So as everyone knows, this is my third one now, I think. This is what youth looks like and this is who I'm representing in terms of the portfolio. Twenty percent of the city's population is aged ten to twenty-four, which is defined as youth. Under that are also defined as children, but I do delve into that in some way, shape or form. Next one. So in terms of a council perspective, there are guiding documents that the council utilise. And that's the Strengthening Community Strategy, the Equity and Inclusion Policy, which the youth policy was melted into. We've also got the Christchurch Youth Action Plan, which in my opinion is a little bit outdated, but we still have a lot of relevant parts in that. Councilor Johansson's probably gonna ask some questions about that. And lastly, the Wayne Francis Charitable Trust part, which is the PYDA. Next one. So just a quick update on all of the organisations across the city that are doing some amazing work. The first one is YCD Youth and Culture Development. I've been working with them quite closely as of late. They do some amazing work across the city, particularly with running the agglue. They do a lot of the outreach programs. And I got to join them in a couple of their basketball three-on-three events across the city. The one in Riquetin was really good. We also have the Christchurch Youth Council who are asking for a review of our MOU. And they also run a youth takeover survey, which is attached inside the report. The last one is the Dening Awa, which is the Canterbury Youth Workers Collective. And they're an organisation that are sort of the champions for youth workers. They surveyed thirty-seven organisations and something that was quite poignant in this is the thirty-seven organisations have a total of sixty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-eight young people who are engaged annually. And the average young person across those programmes is to be spent around a hundred and forty dollars per young person. The cost of youth work is estimated to be around nineteen dollars twenty per hour per youth worker. So sixty-four thousand nine hundred ninety-eight young people received assistance from our youth workers, which is a quite significant amount. Next slide, please. Some awesome stuff that is also coming from the council. And I wanna also give a shout out to the council for giving the two million dollars for the event centre at the youth hub. They have been doing some amazing work. It's flourishing. And the way that they're able to fundraise was something that we should be really highlighting there. Their transitional housing unit is also active and they're pretty much ready to go. They're good to go. Tetahe youth are the next one, and that's also under Dame Sue Bagshaw, which is support for our young people. They're looking for a new home. They've outgrown their space in their current headquarters. And if they were to move to the youth hub, they'd be filling up all of those seats in the youth hub. And there's a lot of hot desks and a lot of space for the youth hub to be able to flourish there. But Tetahe actually require a lot more than what's available at the youth hub, even though they will be having some crosswork over there. The next one is the Kind Foundation. If you see the Kind Foundation, they're just right across the road from Botanical Gardens. They're also known as the YMCA. Phenomenal work. They have a four C centre, which is providing access for young people to access digital means, things through digital means. And also have run a lot of events and youth programs for that area. Next one. Spectback, anyone who turned up to the festival, the Polyfest, you'll see that they are the big player for that. They do some amazing work in terms of the Pacifico movement involving annual events. And they also collaborate a lot with the city council. They also are looking at other ways to reduce barriers and strengthen mentorship support for Pacifico and business leaders. They're also gonna be running some young leadership programs throughout the year, and the city council support them quite well. I'd like to also give a shout out to Sina from our own team for championing that on a Christchurch City Council lens. Next one is the School Struck for Climate. I wanted to acknowledge them. They actually gave a lot of submissions in our last annual plan and long-term plan, and they gave some really great notes in that. They also met Phil. They met Phil a while ago. That was good fun.
By the door.
Alongside councillor Templeton. And they've been quite strong in that space in terms of youth activism and climate strategies. The next one is Arataiohi. Now, they're the peak body for youth development in Aotearoa. And they're dedicated to developing projects and sharing resources, tools and information to enhance youth engagement practices. They are going to be running an annual Involve Conference, which is the national event for youth development in New Zealand. And Christchurch are going to be the host for Involve twenty twenty-five, and it'll be the first time since two thousand and six. Now, the most recent conference attracted more than a thousand attendees at this conference. So I'm looking forward to turning up to that and seeing all the young people and changemakers that are involved in that. So in the report, you'll see that Danielle and I have both attended various events across Christchurch. A lot of those were around many different factions, schools, organisations, champions, and also had some speaking events on both of our sides. Next one. So there are some community board insights that I'd like to quickly talk over too. The community boards support young people in their own different ways. And for the different community boards across the area, they have supported them through youth funding, through activation of spaces such as Loop over here in Papanui. But they've also supported them through funding and resourcing like Te Pa'raiko Houtu, who are highlighted in here, who won an award for the Zayid Sustainability Prize. That was a phenomenal bit of work from Te Pa', and I wanna give a shout out to them too. And you'll see the youth space in Northlands Mall. And those that are involved in those community boards, the central community board, that is a highly successful space that's being used. It was actually in collaboration with Northlands. They were open to it. They were ready to move, to make sure our young people were in a safe space and also had a place to call themselves, call it home. We have youth initiatives across all of council. The parks team, the libraries, the coastal team, transport and recreation and events. The art gallery is also doing quite a lot of things. And one thing that I'm really proud of and seeing is our council supporting our young people so much through various means. And I didn't realise the size of contribution that the council gave to young people until I saw all of the beautiful events and the support that was given through multiple units. Next one. Cool. So we've got a general state of the sector and this one is a bit more eye-opening. But we're seeing a lot of different things around systemic issues for our young people. And the things that you see in the media isn't always true. The ninety-eight percent of young people are contributing phenomenal members of our community. And so two percent, they get the media attention. The youth offending has gone up. Sorry, the rate has dropped slightly from twenty twenty-four, but violence against youth has gone up. We also see that educational achievement, the proportion of students leaving school without at least NCA Level One in twenty twenty-three was the highest at twenty thirteen. A lot of them relate that to the pandemic and also changes within their own social spheres. We're noticing that across the board, particularly of those areas with low deprivation, high deprivation apologies. And we're needing to find ways to try and find them some direction and also ensure that we're doing our part and ensuring that young people are thriving in those areas regardless of the deprivation that we're seeing. Now, being in that space, it's been quite eye-opening. I've been in that space prior to this anyway. But I have a lot of hope for the future in terms of the way that we're engaging with young people. In my view as the portfolio leader, so we could do a bit better in terms of engagement. And I wanted to give some appreciation to Mary and Gary in making sure that we get Danielle because that has really upped the stakes and it's really helped us with our engagement with young people in those organisations. This portfolio is a huge, huge role, and so is the multicultural one. And to be honest with you, I could have done with just one of them. But long story short, the state of our youth in Christchurch is always gonna be a work on. However, I'm seeing it from a positive angle and the things that we're contributing to young people is really phenomenal. And that's my report.
Excellent. Yanni?
Just, um.
Well done.
Thanks for the work that you're doing. It's really cool. I was just wondering if there was any update on the bus exchange. I see there's been some more assaults there, I think, through use in custody. Is there any update you can give us on what we're doing at the bus exchange? And is there any resolution or any action we can take as a council to try and make it safer? Because clearly what we're doing now is not, is not working.
We could get Kelly to do some opper down there, perhaps.
Yeah, I can, I can provide an update on the bus exchange. So there's currently a procurement actually going under for a new contract or an amended contract with the current security that's there. There have been question marks around the productivity of the security that was there. However, council staff went back to the security there and said we needed these things. I'm seeing improvements. YCD are also training the current security up in terms of youth engagement and making sure that they're, they're doing a lot better. However, noting that we are in charge of the security that are in the exchange. We're not in charge of the security that are on the buses. So ECAN are running the security that are on the buses. So it actually needs a more holistic view in the way that we manage our security across not only the bus, but also in the interchange itself.
So have we had anything about what happened last night?
In terms of the antisocial, was it just the scrap that happened last night at five thirty?
A person's in hospital after being assaulted by a group of young people at the bus exchange.
I haven't had any updates from that.
Okay. Could we get some updates about what's happened and possibly what we could do in the short term? Like, we just need to boost security there. I mean, at five thirty on a Tuesday, people should be safe to take a bus in our city. So.
Absolutely.
Appreciate the work that you're doing on it.
No, no, you're right. There is also a hole. The hole is, security cannot cross the road. So if there are, if there are issues that are happening on Litchfield or across the road, the security staff aren't able to engage with, with that, with that event. It's actually a police job. And it's something that I'm actually having a hard time even trying to fathom myself because there have been multiple antisocial events where staff couldn't engage because of that.
Maybe we can find out what's happened, but then if, like, there's a delegation to staff or some additional resources that we can put in place in the interim until you can get the permanent procurement stuff sorted. I personally think we should be considering it. You know, we're trying to get people on public transport.
The procurement that Tyler's talking about is a continuation of the security in the building or on the land. Yeah, okay.
One of the things is working more closely with that city safety team. And I think that one of the things is on the framing. So the city safety team, they deliberately didn't call them security. You know, it's a, it's a proactive what we're aiming for rather than a negative, if you like. And they've been really effective. And I think a closer link between those around that site would be really good.
Do you know, sorry, just one more question. Do you know what hours the youth workers are working at the bus exchange?
Between three and six, off the top of my head. Okay.
All right. Any other questions of Tyler's report?
And the youth workers are mainly for deterrence and making sure that the young people learn and the agglue to stay safe more than intervening in antisocial behaviour. But they're very good at bringing down the level of intensification when it comes to antisocial events.
Tim?
Just two quick things. First one, there are more job applications now online. And young people with learning disabilities are almost kind of really excluded from that. So I just wonder at some point if we could get, I have no idea, I'm a bit older than I was before, but how that's affecting young people with learning disabilities and what are the options for them? That'd be really good to be made public. So I know parents are very concerned because it's kind of brushing those kids aside and they'll never get involved with anything.
Yeah, I can note that. It's really good.
Yeah, thanks. And I guess the second one is for Mary. Could we get a follow-up from our staff? Because we've been in discussions with ECAN with regards to the leasing of the bus exchange. Because I totally agree, it should be one organisation running the whole lot. But ECAN are only interested in the land they want. And they said when they came here last time that they didn't have a bus exchange, or they didn't have a depot close to the stadium. Yet what is the bus exchange? So it'd be really good to follow that up because, yeah, we need one vision and one control for that site. It'd make it a lot easier for those trying to deal with it.
One thing I'd like to say about the bus exchange, because it's probably the only platform I'll be able to use it, is I think this council should really start thinking about different means of security and engagement, particularly in those public transport corridors and areas. So for example, is, are more security, are they more effective or less effective adding more security guards or not? I mean, would having a security-trained youth worker be more valuable and give you more bang for buck potentially? There's back and forth and Susan froze about it. But what we do know is that having someone with a big stab-proof vest walking around looking like a bully in comparison to someone who actually could relate to the young people would probably be a lot, be a lot better. I must also say that. be a lot, be a lot better. I must also say that antisocial activity and the, and the, um, the events are actually listening, um, particularly after YCD have come in to the Igloo. That, that, that's a really good thing. And, and security staff are doing a really good job after they've been talked to and they've been trained by our youth workers. But that's something that we need to start thinking about potentially around finding some other, um, options.
Now, that, that is fantastic. Any other questions? The second will be Pauline. Okay. So I've got to move her obviously. And second, um, any debate, discussion? Now, that's good. Well done, mate. That was very good. Um, also put that motion always in favour. Aye, against? Thank you. That is very well carried. It's great. Thanks Tyler. Right. So number, and you're back on.
Number three.
No, it's a notice motion about micro mobility parking.
Kyoda Tate. Do you want me to speak to it or should we take it as read and answer
Well, take it as read. It's, um, um, Tyler, are you happy with what you see in front of us?
No.
Yep. Oh, I'll move it. Oh, you're seconding it. No, no, righto. Okay. So, well, we, well, everyone's read it. Um, do you want to give a wee preamble on why you bought this? And then Vic's got a question.
Yeah, sure. And then I'll have some questions too. Um, I'm, I'm bringing this to the table because I have been getting contact and actually somebody from a resident association came to the community board, um, from members of the community who, uh, one, um, disabled to elderly and, um, general public such as families. Uh, Rikitin is an extremely busy area and it has a lot of pedestrianisation, has a lot of footfall, um, and also has a lot of e-scooters. Now, I'm a user of both Lime and Ario. Uh, I love them. They're great. But could there be ways where we could manage, uh, speed and parking to be able to assist with normal pedestrians either walking around those things or being able to use their wheelchair around those things? Uh, and also not get families being worried about shared paths, about silent things coming from behind them potentially? I'm not asking for a huge lot, actually, to be honest. I'm asking for them to go and have a yarn to this, to the providers and come back and say, hey, could there be some, some spots for improvement? Yes, no, whatnot. I know that Ario, uh, in particular, uh, have some great technology that's coming through and they're going to be self-driving, I've heard, um, back to their parking spots. But could there be places where we could actually make our community safer while also, um, ensuring that the micro mobility scooters are also accessible and have all the other things too? It's just finding some middle ground, to be honest with you. And that's pretty much it.
Victoria then. Tim?
Thank you. So, thank you Tyler. I'm, I'm actually really confused by the notice of motion and the need for it because my reading of the report says that the staff is already working in this space. So I wonder if Lynette can just talk to that, particularly on paragraph five, it says all the things that you're already doing, which is aligned with the nature of the notice of motion. So it just, to me, it seems like duplication. So I'd really like some clarity and I, I don't know what I'm missing.
Yes, staff are working with, so one of the requirements of the licence is to be able to geofence and the providers themselves are doing a lot of geofencing work. The notice of motion asks for parking spaces. What geofencing can currently do is no parking areas. So you can't park in an area as opposed to where you, you must park. And there is quite a bit of work to figure out whether the, it sounds simple, but whether the reverse of that can actually be done. Um, there is already geofencing areas in place for speeds, so restricted speeds, no parking areas and areas where people can't or have to ride at slow speed on the footpath. Um, so through, for example, through Miravale Village. The notice of motion we got didn't actually ask us to focus on, or it did raise Rikitin, but we are doing it across the city anyway. There is work going on. The focus at the moment is particularly in the central city, um, and in high pedestrian volume areas. And that's what's going on at the moment. We would have to pivot away from that to look at other areas. The issue for us on the notice of motion was that difference between, well, the geofencing for where you can't park versus where you must park, that, that is quite a, that's a technolog- technological change that we couldn't, that will take time and take staff away from doing the other stuff that is going on. And yes, we do understand about speed restricted areas as well. And in fact, sorry, Trudy's beside me. She's working with the providers. The, um, both of the, um, providers have been quite proactive in trying, in geofencing areas where speeds should be lower and we shouldn't have parking. The, there is, Ario does have the ability to remotely relocate their vehicles, but they can't action it yet. Then there is a what?
Well, um, NZT have been lobbied and there's some discussions about how regulatorily, so that's not a word, um, that might happen in the future. Um.
But they can't do it under the current regulations. That we can't have the remote, um, driving.
But in terms of sort of proactive use of, um, clearer semi-designated parking sites, um, for busier areas, we're already working with the operators to do pinpoint app-based parking and, um, you know, basically liaising with them about busier sites and trials we had at Christmas into central city areas for a starter. So.
Okay. So would they be in merit in waiting to see how the providers respond in the outcome of the work that's currently underway before seeking to extend it?
For the other types of areas that are included in this notice of motion.
I, I would, that's what we've come back with our recommendation.
Tim?
Yeah, thank you. I thought at the start of this journey way, way back that we were going to require gut, um, the scooters to be governed to a certain speed. So 4.5 says they can do 25 Ks an hour except with the fencing, uh, the geofencing and it restricts down to 15 Ks. To cover the whole thing and improve safety, why don't we just govern them for wherever they are? Cause an accident can happen anywhere. A child can run out of a driveway or whatever, um, govern them to 15 Ks. It's going to take them a while to get somewhere, but what are we here? 30 Ks? You want to get somewhere quicker? 30 Ks? Why not kill someone? But why not 15 Ks? Cross the board.
Okay, Tyler and then Yanni and then Mel.
Yeah, I didn't want to open that one up for councillor Skandra. But I, 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 I think the, the question I've got then is, um, in terms of legal, are councillors allowed to talk to providers themselves?
Wouldn't be appropriate because just because of the contractual relationship.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Okay. So hence why I brought the notice of motion, because I wasn't allowed to talk to the providers themselves around the stuff. So, um.
Well, you, I mean, you can have a conversation with the provider, but you can't do contract negotiations with the provider.
Oh no, of course not. It's, it's not what I'm after.
Impose requirements on them. So you can have a conversation with them, you know, like people do out on the street with Britain and Hogan and City Care when they come across them.
No.
Yeah. You can't do contract negotiations or look as if you're directing their work or their terms because we could actually, you could inadvertently have a breach of contract or a cost that we incur that's not, um, within the contract.
Yeah. Now, um, in terms of the locations, restricting locations in terms of parking, no parking, uh, it was my apolog-, it's my apologies because the details actually, I actually meant.
The other.
The other.
Okay. So that is happening.
Okay.
Yeah. That is happening. And if there are hotspots, the team can be advised and they can look at it with the providers.
Okay, okay. All right.
Could, could, could I just ask something? Is there any outcome that, uh, councillor Harrison Hunt is seeking that you don't think your work is actually going to achieve? Cause at the moment you think what, uh, councillor Harrison Hunt's trying to achieve can be achieved by what you're doing.
Yes. The, the only one we can't is that we couldn't easily or tell you that we could is that where they must park versus where they can't park.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
So that's the, it's that, it's that nuance and that, um, and that.
Yeah, that's my apologies. Cause I wasn't after that. Yeah. It's a lot of work telling we must park. Yeah.
I think we, we could facilitate a lot of what you're doing through the work that we're already doing.
Okay.
What, what you want to achieve.
So then would we, would we, would we be able to get, uh, a memo or anything of that, of that sort? An update?
The team can, the team, the team can give you an update on what is currently being done. Um, and.
You can do that, can't you?
Yeah.
We were already planning.
And that, and a, and a, and a picture of the geofencing sites and what's going on and some feedback from the two providers. That's looking to be, that can be provided.
Happy to withdraw his, do you want to withdraw your?
Well, I'm happy to just, yeah, move the staff rec if that's the case.
Yeah, okay. Are you happy to move it? I'm happy to second it. Okay. Uh, right. We got few lining up. Yanni?
Yeah, as long as there's a memo. That's, that's really what I want.
So it's, you could just withdraw the notice of motion and ask for a memo.
Wait, Sarah, what have you got?
Can I just, sorry, process wise, a couple of things because getting a memo on this is actually just getting the staff advice, which is what the original notice of motion was, right? It's just requesting a small piece of advice. And a normal notice of motion, I've noticed a change for these two months not being done today from the old format. A notice of motion, the recommendation that's put up is the recommendation from the elected member. And that's the bit that should be in blue, like it has been in the past. And then there's staff and advice under there with potentially alternate recommendation, yeah, alternate resolutions that could be put. But I'm really confused as to why councillor Harrison Hunt's motion isn't the one that's in blue for us to consider. Because what's there is a staff recommendation, not an elected member motion.
So, uh, to answer two things, with all due respect, the memo wasn't, from my understanding, going to cover the advice that Harrison Hunt, councillor Harrison Hunt was asking for. It was going to actually, from what I understood councillor Harrison Hunt say was a memo clarifying what staff were doing. So completely different aspect. Um, this report is a staff report. It clearly puts forward, uh, what the councillor's, uh, notice of motion is and then it gives staff advice. And that is what we are obligated to do, um, under the LGA to ensure that you have the best possible advice to make decisions on.
Yeah, I agree completely that we need to be able to have advice to make decisions and that telling us how long it might take to get the advice is fine. Um, my thing is that it's not a staff, there's staff advice on an elected member notice of motion. Previous ones, when I've looked, I've just had a look back at previous notice of motions, um, the notice of motion goes up from the elected member. It's the elected member's report, it says at the top. Um, and then that's in blue and then the staff advice is underneath.
So, uh, just also remind you that the council did ask for a better reporting and advice on most of motions. And so the secretary has worked with a template to provide you with that.
I suggest we have a workshop to discuss this as an informal, cause I mean, we're just going to go around in circles. It's important to have that conversation, but I just don't think now's the right time. Like, I would like to share my views on notice of motion processes as well, content, but we're not going to get through that today on this, if we're doing it this way.
Yeah, that, that, cause it.
Yeah, yeah.
Lot of time today on things that don't necessarily.
Certainly sounds like staff are well on the way to doing the majority of things that Tyler's after. And I think if he works closely with them going forward, we'll be able to sort out the other things. Yanni? Yeah. Did you have your?
So just a quick question of clarification because when we agreed to go with the licence extensions, um, there are a number of other concerns around things like safety, um, children using them, um, people using them with children, uh, helmets, um, speed. Is, I, I'm just wondering, is there any other work going on looking at those wide issues? And can we get some advice on that?
No, can we? Yeah. Yeah, we will add that into the, the memo because it was part of the licensing requirements and it is touched on in this. I do want to be clear if I can. They weren't licence extensions, they were new licences.
New licences. Yeah. I, I've just noticed like from just observation, a huge number of really dangerous behaviour of people riding them with small children.
Really getting out.
Can we just?
Melanie?
Um, with, um, two D, uh, the areas for reduced speeds, um, one, I was wondering if, um, councillor Harrison Hunt had any specific areas he was wanting to address with that. And two, if that's already being locked at, there's no harm in including that as something we pass, is there?
It is in, I think it is in the recommendation. So it's in D, isn't it? Oh, no, it's right. No, it's not. Yeah, it does not seem.
Yeah, you've talked about Miravale, um, and, um, there was something else. Um, I was just wondering if there are, are any other areas being locked at? Is it what?
Microphone, sorry. When we come back on the, with the memo, we will identify the work that we, the sites that we've got and the, and any work that the providers are currently doing. Um, but going out and identifying new sites and, and working through that is a, is a sort of another piece of work. But we can, we can list that. And if they come in and we will work with councillor and if he's got areas that are of particular interest, we'll raise them with the providers.
Mel? Uh, sorry, Tim?
Um, maybe I'll get announced with this one. With regards to the technology used to actually, um, using a scooter, you've got to put your details in. Is there any way we can work with the providers to, if they, if there's a scooter left in a dangerous or because a date or a risky area of, that's going to restrict disability access or whatever, that we can, um, find them? Do we have, do we have access or?
Yeah, the operators do that anyway on a sort of three strikes and you're out basis. There's kind of a triage.
So they do have a system.
Three strikes and they can't use them.
Exactly, but yeah.
On that sort of warning situation. Yeah.
Um, could we get some more information on that?
That can be in the, that's part of the licensing requirement. So it will be part of them.
You may mark.
An update. Yeah.
Oh, it's, this is come, one of the reasons this is here is because of that concern. So it's obviously not working in some respects. So it'd be good, I don't know if it is or not, but it's, this has come here. One of the issues is about parking everywhere. So if we can get that information, that'd be really good. Thank you.
Tyler?
Kyoda. Could the staff rec be changed then? If you're noting that you're already doing the work, could that be noted into the recommendation? Notes that the work is currently being done?
Um.
Too complicated. It's not, it's not exactly the same as the work you've requested. What the staff, I heard them say was the outcomes will be similar or the same.
Yeah.
There is work underway that will achieve, that it's likely to achieve the outcome.
Hmm.
I'm not, I'm not catching. So staff, staff said, Lynette said that they're doing everything except the no parking parts of the resolution. So then why can't they just make it a noting amendment saying that they're currently doing the work?
I don't think that's what, uh, um, Lynette said. I think Lynette said that she thought the work that was underway would achieve the same outcomes as what you're proposing, uh, except for the, uh, aspect of being able to do the parking.
And, and our staff are not going out and actively identifying particular locations. We are working with the providers to do some of that. So that's a different, it's a different focus for the team, that's all.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry.
Sorry, Cara. Yep, sure.
Sorry. The, the, then the, the next question I've got is the reason, one of the reasons why I brought it is, have you even seen here, you have got Miravale Village? Is it Miravale Village? Is that what it's called?
Yep.
Yeah, Miravale Village and Cashel, Cashelmore and High Street. Why was Miravale Village, um, in place for a restriction or for a slow speed zone?
Basically that came up through pre-Christmas busy pedestrian usage time and, um, seen as a conflict area. and analysed because you could still um ride through on the road um through there on a scooter. But it was just high density. Um yeah, and I mean, you know, obviously the concern is higher pedestrian uses, use areas and because we don't have pedestrian counts, we have to go on reports and observations and liaising with the operators as well, so.
So would Rotherham Street and Ricketon be classed as the same outside the busiest mall in the city?
Quite potentially. So it's, it's something we can raise with the.
Okay. Yeah, that was the whole point of my notice motion really.
Uh councillor Harrison Hunt, are you happy to move as long as there's something in there um that uh staff will provide a, a update on what the workers that they're doing? Is that what you said earlier?
Yeah, just to confirm that some work's being done in terms of.
We can confirm so that staff will provide an update on the work that's being done and the, and progress that's made on that.
If that's all right with you, Mary.
Why, why don't we just have a workshop on scooters? Because there's a whole lot of different things that are being asked that are all over the show about speeds and what the regulation is and things like that. Basically, we've got resolutions saying that we're going to pass resolutions to do nothing of stuff that's already happened. It seems like a real waste of time. Why don't we just have a chat around it because it's a wide-ranging issue and we can do it in that forum as opposed to in the, in the council meeting, I wonder.
Trying to design a plan while we're flying.
Yeah, like a hundred percent. Like, there's not bad questions that are being asked, but I just don't know if it's adding any value to this.
But if we just remove this.
So.
So we provide advice. So that's what.
Through the chair.
So if we, if we potentially change that uh to advice, so staff provide advice, that means there's the opportunity to do that by memo or by workshop.
Yep. And through the chair, the last time we spoke to you, we said we'd provide a, an update. After six months of them operating, we're getting close to that anyway. So that, it's all, it's all part of that.
So you're writing a little bit more in there? Yes. So right, it's moving second on this and it's all up there in front of you now. I'm going, it's trying to debate. All right, I'll put that all. I don't know what we're, what are we even moving?
Needs to be a three, doesn't it?
So it should be a, is that what you're saying? Up. There. Oh yeah, three, yep.
That was.
Right. There it goes. So, Mary, we have you there. Right. Does everyone read it? It gets it, gets it. Go on. Okay. So we've got, we've got a mover and we've got a second. It notes what staff are outlining current work underway and will achieve that. I'll put this motion all those in favour. Aye, against? Thank you. That is carried. Thank you very much. Right. Now, we will go into uh exclude the public, which I'm happy to move and Pauline's happy to second. All those in favour? Aye, against? Thanks, that's carried.